... myself, so this is an opportunity for them to also, we could go out there and help them out.
To learn more about Legacy L.A., visit their website, LegacyLA.org. New anti-crime measures have sent violent crime rates in Watts plummeting in spite of a gang-related homicide in Nickerson Gardens last week. But many residents agree it will take all of them to rebuild a community that struggles with poverty, racial tensions, lack of jobs, and a lack of hope. In the second part of our special report, Anna Marcos takes a look at a community in the process of rebuilding itself.
Even the business of crime must make way for prayer here. That's the first order of the day at the weekly Watts Gang Task Force Council meeting. Residents from grandmothers to ex-gang members meet with police and city leaders to talk about anything that improves the quality of life in Watts.
The people that live in Watts should be the ones that clean it up.
These folk have been dumping this trash there.
But mainly, they strategize ways to free Watts from the stranglehold of crime and gang activity.
I know that I could strap my rifle on my shoulder, unload it, and patrol my neighborhood myself if I want to.
This man is upset over the gang fighting between black and Latino gangs in Gonzac Village, a smaller housing project.
We've got to bring the Latino gangs' innocence to the communication.
Gonzac has no programs like the Community Safety Partnership or CSP, which is so successful in other projects.
We are looking to add on to this CSP program to include Avalon and Gonzac.
Police share information about a string of shootings and killings in July that affected the entire region. But the three major public housing developments in Watts, Nickerson Gardens, Jordan Downs, and Imperial Courts, have stayed amazingly bulletproof.
You guys are doing something really good, really good.
It's a community fighting to take back its neighborhoods. Police and residents say a new and improved partnership together, and meetings like this are having an impact. Some of the projects in Watts are enjoying their lowest crime rates in decades.
Watts was the worst, is the community. But now Watts is totally turned around, big time.
But many residents know it will take all of them to rebuild Watts. That fear of the gangs must make way for strong families at home. This Father's Day event at Nickerson Gardens honors fathers in the family.
It's good to know that in the midst of our brokenness, God has called us to survive.
Councilmember Joe Buscaino, whose 15th district includes San Pedro and Watts, hopes to rebuild the infrastructure. He will invest $18 million in Watts in the next few years. Plans include a new four-screen Watts Star Theater, bringing in new health providers, renovating the Central Avenue corridor, cleaning up dirty alleys, and attracting jobs and business development in a place with few economic opportunities. There are also plans to rebuild the Jordan Downs Housing Development.
What we've also done is bring in Rick Caruso, the developer of The Grove in the city. We brought his executives. We gave him a ride-along in a van of opportunities here for him and his team to invest in, and he's expressed some interest.
But Buscaino takes community building to a whole new level as he brings his pillow and blanket to this sleepover with a family in the Jordan Downs Housing Development.
Just starting the project don't mean we're all bad people, because we're human just like everybody else.
And why not just spend the night, live it, feel it, experience it?
Then, a second sleepover at Nickerson Gardens with a Latino family. This time, he brings his own wife and kids to spend the night.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this meal we're about to eat. We thank you for your guidance.
Watts Deputy for the 15th District, John Jones, was homegrown on Watts streets. He and his Eastside Riders Bike Club are committed to building community by inviting residents to bike rides and kickball events. They often join forces with the Latino Los Riders Bike Club. The group also fixes bikes for kids and hands out free sandwiches to the hungry.
What we're trying to do is change the culture of our neighborhood, and we feel if we're getting people out, moving, riding bikes, playing kickball, walking around the park, then it changes how people think in our community.
This guy right here, he's my brother from another mother.
And while Watts schools struggle to improve, four Markham Middle School students prove that Watts kids can excel. These students just won the National Math and Engineering Science Award for designing a prosthetic arm. Two Latino kids and two black kids working together.
It makes me feel good because people don't usually think of Watts as like winning or doing great things.
If four middle school students can do it, maybe there's hope for the rest of the community. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Several low-performing Watts schools such as Jordan High and 99th Street Elementary have seen test scores shoot up since their partnership for L.A.'s schools took over in 2011. While parents and teachers are more involved and those scores have improved, they are still below state target goals. Larchmont Boulevard will soon see a dramatic new upgrade thanks to the Bureau of Street Services. Rich Samuels has more.
Today, the area around Larchmont Boulevard and Melrose Avenue is pretty typical. It's not much of a gateway to Larchmont Village, but all that is about to change.
Larchmont Boulevard, Main Street, USA!
Fourth District Councilman Tom Labange joined with the Bureau of Street Services and area residents recently to take the first step in transforming this to this.
Main Street, USA is Larchmont Village. Main Street, USA is what we have to try to keep and create.
What the city is creating is a project to construct three eight-foot-wide landscape medians along Larchmont Boulevard, along with a gateway sign. Altogether, the project will upgrade not only the Boulevard, but complement the neighborhood as well.
For us in the Bureau of Street Services, it's very, very gratifying to be part of these projects. There are huge projects in the city, and there are great projects in the city. This is a great project. In my opinion, it is great because it is the result of community collaboration, community participation, community vision.
The project, designed and constructed by the Bureau of Street Services, will be completed this fall. This is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
The Larchmont Boulevard Medians Project involves three divisions of street services: Special Projects, Engineering, and Urban Forestry. After years of delays, construction is set to begin on downtown L.A.'s new federal courthouse. As Gil Reyes tells us, the project is part of a new and constantly changing downtown civic center.
One, two, three!
What's now a fenced-off dirt lot on First and Broadway Streets will soon house L.A.'s new federal courthouse. The 10-story tower is designed to be less imposing than L.A. Courthouses of the past.
It will generate thousands of jobs. It's going to be a beautiful building, and I think that the people of Los Angeles will appreciate having it.
Less Gothic and more green. The tower will have solar panels and other energy-saving features, enough to earn a platinum rating from the U.S. Green Building Council. And imagine here, near the entrance, a reflecting pool and public gardens. The federal courthouse will have 24 courtrooms and 32 judicial chambers.
It's our aspiration to create a landmark that is worthy of this site and of this great city.
When you think about the architecture that's here, Craig, your beautiful design will join almost a symphony of different buildings.
Situated near the Music Center, the new LAPD headquarters, and Grand Park, it's the latest project in the L.A. Civic Center's revival, with more changes in the works. The U.S. General Services Administration also has plans to sell one of the old federal courthouses on North Spring Street to private developers. Proceeds would then fund a second federal courthouse to be built next to this new one. Completion date for this one, 2016. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Federal judges have been pushing for additional space and a new home since the 1990s. Construction plans were canceled in 2006 due to cost increases, but were recently revived. Cost of the building: $319 million. The council turns a gag gift into a heartfelt effort to help the homeless. The mayor asks for volunteers, and the team behind the city's new website is honored. It's all this week on City Beat.
What began as a traditional gag gift when Council President Herb Wesson gave crazy socks to council members on the first day of the new council session has turned into a drive for sock donations to help the homeless throughout the city.
Here at council chambers, inspired by our council president Herb Wesson, he gave us a gift on July 3rd, was it? On July 2nd. And now, it's, his gift gives us the motivation to help others across the city of Los Angeles to pay it forward.
To kick off your sock drive, I have 150 pairs of socks that are the warm white socks to kind of open it up for the council, hoping that everybody on the council will at least do that many or more.
Each of the city's 15 council districts will compete to see which office can most effectively mobilize their networks to generate the most donations. The drive runs through August 28th. The city's Information Technology Agency was recognized at city council recently for their redesign of the city website, LACity.org, for the first time in 15 years.
As you know, colleagues, our website is often the first impression of Los Angeles for thousands of people around the world who visit our site every year. If we want to be a city that's innovative, forward-thinking, and business-friendly, we need a website that reinforces that message.
Despite a 40% staff cutback, the ITA completed the project using in-house designers at minimal cost to the city.
As the chair of the ITGS committee, we had our first hearing yesterday. We're starting to look at all sorts of ways to engage all of you, not just in the website, which is the critical first phase, it's the face that everybody sees, but into taking us to the back end as well, and getting Wi-Fi for the city, getting remote testimony, making the city more accessible, more transparent, and more efficient by using technology.
An initiative like this takes a village. ITA appreciates the teamwork and support that we receive from the entire city family, helping update the content of the website and get it ready for the launch.
The mayor is calling for volunteers to serve on the city's crisis response team, which provides critical on-scene emotional support and resources to families and witnesses, freeing the LAPD and LAFD to do their work.
One mayor can't save a city, and even 50,000 city employees in a time of a disaster are limited what they can do. But in every single neighborhood, on every street, every block, in every part of the city, having crisis response teams will help us if it's an earthquake, an act of terrorism, man-made, or natural disaster. We can train to help ourselves in those times of crisis, so we're asking Angelenos to join with us.
Volunteers must be at least 21 years old and in good physical condition. Serving on the crisis response team requires a seven-week training course, which begins September 9th. The application deadline for the fall session is August 23rd. For more information on the program, residents should email lacrt@lacity.org.
More improvements are springing up at the Mulholland Memorial Fountain in Los Feliz. As Gil Reyes reports, the renovations mark a major milestone for L.A. water.
Another big splash for a local landmark. Residents of Los Feliz are spouting off about additional improvements to their favorite fountain.
Now, we are creating a special garden around it that features beautiful water-conserving plants and landscaping for all to enjoy.
The L.A. Department of Water and Power renovated the Mulholland Memorial Fountain earlier this year, and now they're improving the grounds surrounding it, adding new walking paths, park benches, and educational signage. Dubbed "The Los Angeles Aqueduct Centennial Garden," it will open to mark the 100th anniversary of the Los Angeles Aqueduct. That project, supervised by William Mulholland, continues to deliver water from the eastern Sierra Mountains to Los Angeles.
Water played a particularly special role in the creation of our neighborhood, which lines the entire southern boundary of Griffith Park. And the L.A. River Project going on just behind us now reminds us that the role of water is going to be prevalent in our future as well.
Councilman Tom Labange grew up in the area.
I don't think there's another corner where the fountain is good as this. There's a nice little one in Beverly Hills, okay? At Santa Monica and Little Beverly Hills. And where? Oh, he's going to France there. Yeah, that's all right. You go there. You go to France and give us a report, send us a postcard.
No postcards needed here. See Los Feliz's fountain up close at 3360 Riverside Drive. The new park opens in October. In Los Feliz, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
This space will also include a decomposed granite path that depicts the aqueduct's 233-mile passage from the eastern Sierras to Los Angeles. Whether you're in the mood for history, culture, music, or movies, there's something in store for you on this week's edition of Things to Do.
This Friday, August 24th, at the John Amson Ford Theater, the Pacific Ballet Dance Theater presents "The British Beat," a tribute to British music and the dance styles they inspired. From the 19th century to World War II, and all the way to the Beatles, Elton John, and Adele. Live musicians accompany dancers in this unique trip through modern culture. The program begins at 8:00 p.m. The Ford Theater is located at 2580 Coanga Boulevard East in Los Angeles. For more information, visit FordTheaters.org. Also on Friday, catch a new interpretation of the classic Diary of Anne Frank at the NoHo Arts Center in North Hollywood. Based on the diaries of a 13-year-old girl's experience hiding from the Nazis, this production is not to be missed. Friday's performance starts at 8:00 p.m. The NoHo Arts Center is located at 11136 Magnolia Boulevard in North Hollywood. For more information and other showtimes, check out Plays411.com. And this Saturday, Cultural Collaborations is a culturally diverse night of music, dance, and storytelling at the John Amson Ford Theater. This year, the program celebrates the L.A. Jewish Symphony's 10th consecutive year at the Ford, featuring special guest storyteller Theodore Bacell. The program begins at 7:30 p.m. The Ford Theater is located at 2580 Coanga Boulevard East in Los Angeles. Are you a Harry Potter fan? Then make sure you don't miss the Harry Potter collection at the Hollywood Museum. This ongoing exhibit features authentic artifacts from the Harry Potter films, including costumes, wands, props, and brooms. The Hollywood Museum is located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood, and is open Wednesday through Sunday from 10 to 5:00. For more information, go to thehollywoodmuseum.com. And on Sunday night at the Egyptian Theater in Hollywood, it's a classic double feature directed by Orson Welles. He was only 25 when he directed Citizen Kane, which stands today not only as his masterpiece, but as a groundbreaking film in cinema history. Welles stars in the film as Charles Foster Kane, a ruthless newspaper publisher supposedly modeled after William Randolph Hearst. Following Citizen Kane, stay forward with The Magnificent Ambersons, Welles' 1942 tragic tale of a wealthy family in crisis. The films start at 7:30 p.m. The Egyptian Theater is located at 6712 Hollywood Boulevard in Hollywood. For more information, go to AmericanCinematheque.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The L.A.'s Best After-School Enrichment Program continues to grow and make its way into more schools. Rasha Goel has more.
For some elementary school students, their first day of school this year will be a memorable one. It's not every day students get a chance to have the mayor of Los Angeles read a story, shoot some hoops.
Skyhook!
Sing with them.
Happy Birthday to you!
We love you!
And share some exciting news about an after-school program called L.A.'s Best.
Today, I'm very excited to announce that we're going to be expanding this program to five more schools this year.
Those five schools are Michelle Obama Elementary School, Sally Wright Elementary, Washington Primary Center School, South Region Elementary Number 10, and South Region Elementary Number 11.
Because when you go to L.A.'s Best, guess what? You got a better chance of staying in school, a less chance of ever committing a crime, but none of us are ever going to do that, right? And I know this program well because I've seen it firsthand.
We are so lucky in L.A.'s Best to be able to be here for you, here for other schools, and almost 29,000 children throughout the city.
For 25 years, L.A.'s Best has been providing after-school education, enrichment, and recreation programs for elementary school children ages 5 to 12. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
L.A.'s Best will now be at 194 schools, serving students across the Los Angeles Unified School District. That's going to do it for this edition of L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Cindy San Luis. We want to remind you that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Every day, our brave troops and their families stand up for us.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now, we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
G'day, Troy McCubbin from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 21st. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonn, Buscaino, Sidiou, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caress, Corcoran, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, wonderful. Let's get started. A first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Fuentes moves, Weezer seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ofero moves, Parks seconds, next. Do we just go through the agenda right now, or do you want to continue some items?
No, sir. As far as I know, we're ready to run through the agenda. Items 1 through 14 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards on these items?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 2, 3, and 10.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the other items. Members, any specials? Mr. Englander?
2, please.
Okay, we're going to hold item 2. Any other? Okay, let's prepare, Madam Clerk, to vote on the items.
Mr. President, I believe the sergeant-at-arms is telling me we do have a card on item number 1, sir.
Then we'll hold item number 1 as well. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. I didn't hear you.
11 ayes.
All righty, I heard you loud and clear that time.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered at a later time today with 12 members.
Hopefully, we will get to 12 members. At that time, I will reconsider the items, but...
Mr. President, pardon me.
You're pardoned.
I do see that Councilmember Martinez is in the room and was in the room for that vote, so there were 12 members present.
Oh, so then that's already taken care of.
Yes, sir.
All right, there's Newry saving the day again. All right, let's go on to the next section. I think that's items 15 through 28.
Yes, sir. They're items 15 through 28. They're items for which public hearings have been held. They're items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so we don't -- no need for public comment? I'll go to Mr. Englander first, and then, Mr. Parks, to you. Mr. Englander?
Item 23, please.
23 for Mitchell, Englander. Mr. Parks?
On number 27, we'd just like to have that sent to E. and in committee because it deals with a policy matter about funding.
What was that, 27?
27.
Okay, without objection, can we do that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, so do we -- Members, any other specials? See none? Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us to where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 29 through 33. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. This time, I'll go to Mr. Parks, then, Mr. Englander. Mr. Parks?
31 special.
31 special for Mr. Parks. Mr. Englander?
Yes, thank you. On item 30, can we hold that over for one week, please?
Okay, without objection, item 30. It's requested to be continued for one week.
Thank you, sir.
What day would that be, Mr. Clerk?
That's August 28, sir.
All right, then, without objection, Mitchell, that's the order. We will continue that item for one week. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we still have items remaining in the section 29 through 33.
Okay, so let's -- do we have cards?
We have cards on items 29, 31, and 33.
32, I'm sorry.
And 32 as well.
Sergeant, and I generally don't do this. Do you have some cards for section 29 through 33? If you could please hand those to the Clerk?
Mr. President, we now have cards in on every item in that section, sir.
Okay, then we'll hold every item that's on that section. And that brings us to what?
That brings us to items 34 and 35. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, until Mr. Kocorian gets here, that would be my desire. We'll just hold those items.
Very good, sir. That takes council to presentations.
Mr. Parks, are you ready? So at this point in time, we would like to turn the council meeting over to Mr. Parks. Mr. Herman, we only do the pledge on Tuesdays. I appreciate you being ready.
Come on up. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Mr. Afari Hutchinson to come up at this time, Michelle Richardson, and Pablo Baez to come up. Today, colleagues, we're going to present a resolution to this -- to the Los Angeles Urban Policy Roundtable for their involvement in highlighting a very significant event that happened over 50 years ago. On August 28, 2013, will mark the 50th anniversary of the historic 1963 March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. This march marked a monumental milestone in the struggle and sacrifice of many Americans who fought for racial equality and justice. Generations of Americans of every background supported this historic 1963 March on Washington to eliminate discrimination against African-Americans. And 1963 March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom was the symbol and substance of civil rights movement and developed to achieve the goal of equal rights of all Americans, brought together a broad coalition of civil rights, labor, and religious organizations to create national support for civil rights legislation. With the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, does hereby declare August 28, 2013, as Freedom at 50 Day. We also like to recognize and honor the 1963 March on Washington as one of the signature events in the history of our nation, and support the Los Angeles Urban Policy Roundtable's 50th Anniversary Call to remember the significance of the March on Washington and securing civil rights for all Americans. All city residents are encouraged to recognize and celebrate this important historical milestone by participating in activities that mark this date. I purposely went very quickly on my comments because I'd like to ask Mr. Afari Hutchinson to come up as the person that requested us to move forward on this, and he has much more in-depth comments. Thank you.
Earl, good to see you. Good to see you and Pablo. Maybe we'll eat it, meet it, IHOP again this Sunday for breakfast. That was a pleasant surprise.
Well, thank you. You got it. Well, thank you, Councilman Parks, first of all, and City Council President Herb Wesson. Thank you. And yes, we have to stop meeting at the IHOP on Sundays. But as Councilman Parks and also members of the City Council, too, you know, I think it's very important to, as Councilman Parks said, really recognize the spirit and the significance of what we're going to see next week. August 28 marks the 50th anniversary of the historic March on Washington. And looking around the City Council, including many of the members on the City Council, I got to tell you, many of you would not be here today, sitting on the City Council, would not be in many City Councils, would not be in many state legislatures, would not be in many congressional seats, and I might add, would not be in a White House today if it wasn't for the spirit and the sacrifice, blood, sweat, and tears that went on on August 28 to make August 28. It wasn't just a day for jobs and freedom, which was the theme of the march. And by the way, that's a pretty good theme even for the day 50 years later. But at the same time, it was something else. It was global. It was colossal. It was monumental. It changed the face of America. So as we fast-forward 50 years to August of 2013, you know, I had to kind of reflect for a minute. There are three dates that I think many of us of my generation can remember. Number 1, it's always asked, where were you when JFK was killed? And by the way, in another two months, three months, we'll be coming up on the 50th anniversary, if you can believe that, of the JFK assassination. Where were you on that day? Just about anybody of our generation can remember that. Where were you at on the day in 1968 when Dr. Martin Luther King was gunned down in Memphis? Many of us can graphically still remember that. Where were you on, as we move forward, on September 11, 2001? Many of us can remember that. But we can also remember, too, where we were August 28, 1963. But even those that weren't born then, the unborn generations, that is even more important, as Councilman Parks certainly eloquently made clear. It should be for them that weren't born, generations unborn, two generations removed. Where can we make a difference with them? That's why when Councilman Parks said, not just a day, a symbolic day, that we just look at, it comes and it goes, but it's also a day of reflection, recognition, remembrance, and also one other thing, action. Let's put some body to it. So, Mr. President, and Councilman Parks, and members of the City Council, what we did was we took it one step further. We didn't just -- we're not just calling for a resolution. We hopefully hope you support that. We're calling for that. But we also wanted two other things to give body to it. Number 1, remember, the goal of the march was jobs and freedom. That's important, jobs and freedom. So what we wanted to do was we challenged the business community, elected officials, but especially business leaders, to weigh in on it on August 28. And here's how you do it. 50 employers in the City of Los Angeles make a pledge to hire a minority persons, actually, 2 would be better, 3, 4, 5 would even be better still, given the chronic crisis of unemployment in minority communities. In the spirit of the day, that puts body and substance to it. So what we call for, the Jobs, the Freedom at 50 Day Jobs pledge. The second thing, as Councilman Parks eloquently said, is this. Young people, I keep going back to that, teachers, administrators, on the job, workplace, but especially in schools, children and students that day, reflect with them the meaning and significance of August 28, 1963, and why many of you would not be here and where you are, and the progress and the strides in moving forward and changing the tapestry and face of America if it wasn't for the events of that day. So once again, the City Council has a magnificent opportunity to not only bring spirit and meaning to the day, but substance to the day with the resolution. And so we ask for your support on that. And once again, Councilman Parks, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down. Mr. Parks, back to you.
Okay, just finally, we'd like to present Earl a resolution signed by all members, all elected members of the City of Los Angeles, and thanking him for coming forward with this Freedom at 50 Day, and we look forward to working with him in the future.
All right, let's give it up for Earl Afari Hutchinson.
Thank you.
Well-deserving, well-deserving. Oh, Pablo, you wanted to say, go right ahead.
It's actually Pedro Baez.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. President.
I've been calling you the wrong name for like seven years.
It's true.
I apologize.
I had to correct you for seven years. Mr. President, good morning, and good morning, council, and also, of course, to my councilman, Joe Buscaino. Always good to see you, sir. I want to endorse, and I also want to urge all of you to spread the word, not just here in the chamber, but to all of your constituents, to take honor on the 28th of August, as we commemorate this very important day. As to where I was on August 28, 1963, I was in my living room at the age of 13, watching the magnificent oratory by Dr. Martin Luther King on a 17-inch Dumont black-and-white TV, which, of course, today doesn't even exist. But the thing is, I remember that day very clearly. And I also remember, too, the throng of people that were there. It was diversity before diversity even became a word of the everyday English language. And it was much, much appreciated about the fact that Dr. King mentioned the fact that this was something that all of us shared. It didn't just mean black and white. It meant brown. It meant yellow. It meant red. It meant all of us together. Humanity should be sharing in this freedom, and also never having to worry again about having a job, and being in poverty, and being in debt. This is something that's extremely important, and we hope that when you bring this to your constituents, be they business people, be they just ordinary citizens, they take this word to their hearts, and they make this a day to remember by hiring the unemployed. Thank you so very much.
Again, congratulations. Okay, at this time, I'd like to take a moment, joined by Mitch O'Farrell, to welcome an individual that is not a stranger to this building, to this horseshoe, an individual that I had the pleasure and honor to serve with in the California State Assembly for four years. I used to lovingly refer to her as my conscience when we served together for those many years. And that's, ladies and gentlemen, if you could please give a round of applause to former school board member, former council member, former assembly member, and gonna-be-soon Commissioner Jackie Goldberg. Mitch O'Farrell, a word?
Sure. I just want to take a quick moment and acknowledge you, Jackie Goldberg, as one of my predecessors, that I'm very, very honored to be sitting in this seat, representing as one of your legacy projects. It was about 20 years ago that I became very active in my community of Glassell Park. You were my council member, so I considered you a mentor of sorts, and it's great to see you in council today. You have been a great public servant and will continue to be in your new post as commissioner. So thanks for being here today.
All right, Jackie, welcome home, okay? All right, Mr. Clerk, where are we? Let's get this, take care of a little business. No, Mr. Weezer, did you have a presentation for today? Okay, so that is an error on the president's part. I apologize. Let's go to business, Mr. Clerk. What items would be next?
Mr. President, that brings council to item number 1, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Zuma Dogg, please come forward on item 1. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 100,000 successful requests a month. And you're not going to deny me saying hello to Jackie Goldberg. I was responsible for term limits that got rid of her. Number 1, God, thank God, term limits. Number 1, this concerns the Office of Finance to record a lien against Seth Riggs' speech, Level Singing International. Seth, you owe us $17,435. Cough up the money. But if you can't pay it in dollars, we will accept the same amount in crazy socks. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Zuma Dogg, item 1.
Yes, I'm here to say, I am saying that you should release all this off the agenda. Do not collect the money for the liens, because I've been coming here since 2006. And if there's one issue that is of the biggest corruption in the city, it's the lien program. The city has a bad habit of walking up to property owners and saying, hey, you got to do this, you got to do that, you got to do this, see? Because I'm Tony Soprano's crew from The Godfather, and if you don't do it, well, you're going to be on lien. And then you fix the problem, and then you know what? You still go to the court. Listen, the FBI has been looking into this, based on information I gave them. So you better be careful if you're collecting money for liens, because you've been leaning them illegally, okay? So the city is one big corrupt money laundering facility. It's been under FBI investigation over the Housing Department when Herb Wesson was council's housing chair. So I like to say, in an abundance of caution, don't get yourself in more hot water, punks.
All right, let's prepare to vote on that item, members. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, I think Mr. Clerk would just go into item 2 now, and it's been held again by Zuma Dogg and John Walsh on item 2. Zuma Dogg, John Walsh on item 2. Please come forward. Oh, Mitchell, did you want to say something?
Oh, yes, on item 2? Yes, for 2, I've actually got to call up Mr. Richard Tefank and the city attorney to the table for a quick clarification.
Okay, you, why don't you allow me to do the 2 public comment cards, and then we'll defer it to you, okay?
You're the president, Mr. President.
All right, some days. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Zuma Dogg.
This is a very important item. This concerns reining in the wild antics of valet parking. I live right around the corner from lots of nightclubs, so I have to deal with this. I just want, I know that criminals do not watch this, but if criminals watched it, this is the way you can steal a car. First, disguise yourself to look like a Mexican or an El Salvadoran. Buy a nice pair of black pants with a crease in it. Put on a red jacket. Come to my neighborhood, and white guys will stop, park in front of the club, and throw their keys at you, because they'll just, this happens, this has happened many times. They just assume you are the real parking attendant. Now, if you're black and you're 4'7", it isn't going to work. Or if you look like me, it isn't going to work, but because, of course, the clubs refuse to hire minorities other than Hispanics to do the parking. But if you are an Hispanic, you can steal, the record is at the Palace. A guy by the name of Jose Gonzalez bought a jacket for $25 and stole five cars in front of the Hollywood Palace. Now, remember, when you steal it, you drive it around the corner, and there are guys there who give you the $500. Then they take the car, and guess where the car ends up? That's right, it ends up in El Salvador at a used car lot. Remember, let's put some teeth into this. Remember, let's put some teeth into this. I'm telling you, we need every parking lot attendant to be licensed, and they make a lot of money, and we should have everybody have these jobs, not just one ethnicity. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Zuma Dogg, followed by Juan Akala. Juan Akala, please head towards the center aisle. Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, Zuma Dogg from LaCityNews.com, and I do support this, maybe about once every two years, I support something Council has on the agenda, and here's why. You know, I try to bike down the street, and then you got all these restaurant owners, they pop up these illegal banded valet zones. I go, hey, what the hell is this, a valet zone? Oh, it is. Meanwhile, then I have to go around the illegal valet zone, and then the bus comes by, and the cars, and then I almost get killed every day. So, get these people's illegal valet zones the hell off the fucking streets already, so I can bike down it safely. Thank you, Council.
What did you just say? Yes, yes, I was illegal.
Juan Akala.
I was called here illegally, because I used to be an illegal alien. They took my country, and they called me an illegal alien. I'm a Mexican. You stole half my country, and you called...
Get on the item, Mr. Akala.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Mexicans do park those cars illegally. By the way, who the hell ever voted for a parking restriction? I thought we lived in a democracy, and we got everybody uncomfortable with the parking situation. You can't even tie your horse anymore, like in the old days. We used to have horse tips. We haven't made much progress. You know, the last two nights, right by my neighborhood, big police chases. You know what they were chasing? People stealing cars. They, and they sent like 20 cop cars after this one guy that stole one used car from my used car lot. Wow, what a beautiful society. And then you're trying to throw the drug addicts out of their homes?
Mr. President, we're off topic.
Stay on the subject, Juan.
Oh, yeah, the subject is, we live in a stupid society.
Thank you. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could please ask City Attorney Brian Satelli and Richard Tefank to the table? Thanks, Tom. I understand we're almost there on this ordinance, and it's critically important, rather than go through all the details on this, as we have, and it's had numerous public hearings as well. I believe we're almost there. We recently received one little detail question from the Hotel Owners Association, and that was sort of a little thing that looks like it might need some technical corrections, and I want to get your input on that. And if that's the case, what would it take to get that done?
Good morning, Council. Richard Tefank, Executive Director of Board of Police Commissioners. As Councilmember Englander indicated, we were provided a copy of a letter from the Hotel Association of Los Angeles expressing concerns related to three issues. One involved that there was a temporary construction that had to occur on their property, and they had to move their parking to the street for that temporary period, how that would be accommodated, and requesting an exemption from that particular part of the ordinance. Also, as it related to, occasionally, they have overflow parking, that they have to go across the right-of-way to get to the overflow parking, and then, thirdly, was the issue of making very clear that if they operated all of their activities on their property, they would not be required to have a valet operator permit, nor would their attendance required to be permitted. And that clearly was the intent of the ordinance, but we need to have some technical language correcting that, and I'll defer to Mr. Satelli from the City Attorney's Office to speak specifically to that.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilmembers. We did meet with the Executive Director of the Hotel Association, I believe, last Monday, and we believe we may have a solution to the issue at hand. However, our office needs some direction as to what the Council would like to do. The first issue would be, provide some type of exemption for a valet operator, who ordinarily would not be required to get a permit, because all the valet operation is on the footprint of the, footprint of the location where they're conducting valet, to provide some type of temporary variance that would be vetted by the Police Commission, the Executive Director, to afford them an opportunity to conduct their valet operations during the temporary time that the construction's being done, and so, they wouldn't have to ordinarily get a permit. So, that's one of the issues. The second issue was dealing with the valet attendant, who is an employee of the valet operator, in this case, the hotel where they wouldn't need a permit, that there'd be an exemption for that type of valet attendant, wherein a valet operator who does not need a permit would not have to get a permit, because the valet, the hotel would have a vetting process in place to ensure that the valet attendants are properly, have a driver's license, that they have the various requirements that are already accounted for in the ordinance. So, we just need that direction from Council to make those changes.
If there's no objection, then I would suggest that, how long would it take for you to write those technical amendments?
You know, I already started working on the amendments this morning, so hopefully it wouldn't take very long, but I think it probably, it probably should go to, back to committee, so that we have a vetting process on the amendments, so if you...
30 days. Well, if you think it needs to go back to committee first, I think we can work it out without going back to committee and bring it back here. I'm certainly welcome to work with you offline, as the Chair of the Committee as well. So, if we could, we'll go ahead and bring it back here then in 30 days, and we'll give the direction to you, instruct the City Attorney to draft the various technical amendments as you described, and bring it back here in 30 days, and we'll continue to work out that language to make sure the association is covered as well, that unintended consequence. Mr. President, if there's no objection to that, that's what I ask the other...
Thank you very much, Richard. Daniel, do you have anything you got to add?
Dan Mitchell, Department of Transportation. The second direction on the agenda item two was to direct DOT to report on a clarification of how the parking meter guidelines ensure that meters are available and marked with official signage, so I just wanted to respond to that. So, the meters will be marked the same way they are today for valet operations as passenger loading zones during the time that valet operations are in place. So, that won't change with this ordinance, we'll operate it in the same manner.
Mr. Kretz has some comments. Mr. Kretz of the Fifth.
Not much, this is desperately needed, so I would ask that you move forward as expeditiously as possible.
All right, and also, on Hollywood Boulevard, north on Cherokee, you have meters, and you tell people every night, because the meters say, I can park there, yet it's a valet zone. I don't want double talk from you on that, so I want you to look at that, make it very clear and simple. This meter is a loading zone at the evening, or whatever the case may be. And make sure you're tough on the ones who need to be tough on, and fair on the ones who need to be fair on, and good on the ones that need to be good on. All right, next item, thank you.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, it will, that matter will be continued to September 24.
24 September, good days. Okay, let's go, item number 10, please.
Item number 10, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh of Hollywood, California. Pass, okay. No speakers on the queue on this item? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. 15 ayes. All right, Mr. Englander on item 23.
Right, thank you.
15 ayes.
So, this is what it feels like to sit at this table.
Yes, on this side. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Before we dive into the presentation, item 23 before you, I want to give you a little bit of background on how we got here. Our streets are in failed condition, nearly a third of our streets are in failed conditions. As you can, as you witnessed, your streets in your respective districts, I see a sea of red here. Back in January, and as Chair of Public Works, when I first got here, I recognize the importance of fixing every failed street in the City of Los Angeles, and my colleague, Mr. Englander, has been working on this issue when he was then the Chief of Staff for Councilmember Greg Smith, to the point where we said, enough is enough. If we continue to sit on our hands and do nothing, this problem will become more expensive. When we proposed this idea back in January, our goal was to get this on the last, the May ballot this last year, and put it before the voters on a bond measure to fix every failed street in the City of Los Angeles. And what we heard was, great idea, Councilmembers Buscaino and Englander, we want more information, how are we going to pay for this? And we want to, the process to be transparent, to include a number of key stakeholders in the City of Los Angeles, neighborhood council members, the business and labor groups, property owners, community-based organizations, and we heard loud and clear that we wanted to get more information, and what we did, this Council, or previous Council, directed us to put together a comprehensive community outreach plan to educate the public about the problem and find solutions to fix nearly 9,000 lane miles of our failed streets. The matter was referred to my committee, and in the presentation, we'll explain the results of this public outreach plan. And before we get into the presentation, I want to acknowledge the team that's been in place, that's been working together for many, many months, every Monday, 8:00 AM conference calls, the CLA, the CAO, and their teams, our respective council member, our council team as well, we'd like to acknowledge them, and Kelly Lou for an incredible PowerPoint presentation, her first one in the City of Los Angeles, and you'll be impressed by it. I also want to recognize the Director of Street Services, who's here to answer any of your questions, Nazario Salceda, and our City Engineer, Gary Lee Moore, who have joined us here. And want to turn it over to Mitch for some opening remarks before we dive into this PowerPoint.
All right, thank you, Joe. And I really want to thank Joe Buscaino, who, when he first took office, realized quickly, not only as a former senior lead officer, but now as a council member, that the number one issue outside of public safety is the condition of our, and the quality of life in our communities. And it starts with the streets in every neighborhood. It affects every Angelino every single day, whether you're a pedestrian, whether you're a senior, whether you're a motorist, a cyclist, an environmentalist. It cuts across all demographic and social graphic boundaries, and it affects every council district. In the last 10 years that I've been with the city, it's the number one issue, it's the number one call that we get to our council office on a regular basis, outside of those hot-button issues that come up. It's the question of, when are you going to fix my street? It's been 30 or 40 years, 50 years, 60 years, and it makes our communities look terrible, it affects property crimes, and it ruins the environment, slows down traffic, and it slows down public safety. So, when I started working with then-Councilman Greg Smith, my predecessor, and he was Chair of Public Works, we started doing a deep dive on this and looking at all of the issues and the conditions of our streets. We started a study that we initiated in 2003, and it came back and it said, to fix every failed street in the City of Los Angeles, it was going to cost around $1.5 billion. It was about 10 years ago. The price tag has doubled. We anticipate that it will double again in another 10 years. So, what we did is, as Mr. Buscaino said, we got together in January, we put out a motion that said, we want to raise $3 billion and fix every single street in the City of Los Angeles, and we want to do it in the next 10 years. It created a little shock and awe, and people wanted us to do a lot of extensive outreach, and we'll get into that. So, this is how we spent our summer vacation. We wrote a book to each and every one of you. We're happy to sit and autograph it for you afterwards, and this will be our official book signing, but with this book is a roadmap to fix our streets. And so, this is your new guide, your Buscaino-Englander Guide to the City of Los Angeles, to fixing our streets, and we're going to walk you through this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. So, with our first slide, and again, you can refer to this PowerPoint before you in the book that was handed out. We wanted to explain to you the growth and history of our street network, and if you look, in 1904, the city had 500 lane miles of paved streets, and today, we have 6,500 center lane miles of paved streets. You've seen the overall increase of center lane miles across the city. And the City of Los Angeles grew rapidly in the early 20th century. A post-World War II housing boom and related growth grew the network by its largest percentage, as seen in this slide. The developers initially paid for the construction costs for most city streets and sidewalks at the time, and...
And then I'll talk about the funding, and actually, before I do a deep dive into the funding and how we got here as well, is I'll walk you through the book, that's before all of you. There's also, it'll all be online, and we've got a website for that as well. But Joe and I got together, you'll see in Tab 1, is the actual full report, what's before you today to actually vote on, is the report that we authored. The Council PowerPoint presentation, that's before you as well, you have got a copy of that. Our Council motion that initiated this, a study from the UCLA Anderson School of why it makes sense to make this type of investment now, it's the best investment for Los Angeles, all the outreach meetings, the various reports from the CAO and the CLA on pavement preservation, the proposed budget, a trip report that talks about mobility in California and fixing the streets, California, the statewide local street and roads needs assessment that's done on a regular basis. Each one of you, which has the council map that shows every failed street in your own district, you also have a pull-out version for you in the book as well, and then the next steps. But with that, and going through the PowerPoint on Slide 2, the lack of funding, this is really the key issue, is that we've got certain revenue streams that go directly into and dedicated specifically for fixing streets. Those are depleting revenue streams that go down every single year. And in fact, and most people, and the first question they ask is, well, California has the highest gas tax of any state in the country, and that is true. In fact, it's about 36 cents per gallon here in the City of Los Angeles, and let's break that down for you and what that means. 36 cents per gallon, half of which, it's per gallon, by the way, it's not per dollar. So, as gas prices go up, the revenue stream for gas tax, which is earmarked specifically for fixing streets, does not go up. In fact, it goes down, and here's why. The 36 cents, half of which, off the top, goes to the federal government. The other 18 cents is divided up, it goes to the county in the state of California, the balance of which, approximately 3 cents, 3 cents goes to the City of Los Angeles. That 3 cents has not changed in over a decade. In fact, it's been close to two decades that it's hovered around 3 cents per gallon. The other part of that is, as you see from the slide, from 1970 to now, cars are getting much better fuel economies, and because of that, as you put more gas in your car, or less gas in your car and drive more miles, you're paying less into the system, particularly those who have hybrids. So, shame on you if you have hybrid, no, I'm kidding. But if you have a hybrid, if you're carpooling, all of those issues and initiatives that we've been pushing for good reason, but it's lowering, it's lowering the revenue stream that goes back into gas tax to fix the streets. In fact, just, just this year alone, we've lowered it about $5 million from last year. The previous year was about another $6 million, it keeps going down. The other revenue streams that keep going down are IRA funds, we were getting some IRA funds, that's now depleted, Prop 1B funds, that's gone, and Prop C funds have now sunset. So, with all of those revenue streams that were specifically dedicated and earmarked for fixing streets, they're gone, or they keep going down every single year. Next slide. With that, let's talk about the inventory of our, of our curtained streets as well. So, right now, if you look at the size of the infrastructure, we have 28,000 lane miles in the City of Los Angeles, 28,000 lane miles. To give you an idea, Earth is 26,000 miles. We have 28,000 lane miles, roughly, one-third of which are in failed condition, and so, we'll go through it out as well, and by comparison, so you know...
So, what you're saying, Mitch, so everybody knows, the Earth is 28,000?
26,000 miles around, Tom. 26,000 miles.
So, you have to go in Los Angeles, you go around the world, you go once, plus another 20, or 2,000 miles?
That's right. And, and with that, it's enough for a 10-lane freeway to drive from New York to Los Angeles, 28,000 miles. And so, by comparison, New York has 18,000 miles, Houston is around 16,000, and Chicago has less than 10,000 miles.
If you look at the next slide, the quality of our streets is a disappointing letter grade of C minus, and how we got to that C minus grade, we looked at a number of components. Obviously, the aging streets, the heavy traffic, the terrain, and the size of the network, as indicated in the previous slide. And as a father of two, we can do better. When I tell my kids to get a better grade, we're shooting for A's, and this is the whole point of trying to fix all... And this is the whole point of trying to fix all of our streets so we can get to the AB condition. Next slide. If you look at the Washington DC, a nonprofit based out of Washington DC, the TRIP report indicated that Los Angeles drivers pay an additional $746 in operating costs. Repairs and maintenance, increased fuel consumption, tire wear. You know, when you go through a pothole in the city of Los Angeles, not only you feel it, but you also hear it. And we see in Los Angeles alone, motorists in LA pay that additional $746 additional dollars in additional operating costs. The effects of poor pavement, you're also looking at the increased traffic, the slower public safety response, which I can attest to, working as a police officer for nearly 15 years, rolling Code 3 to an incident, and hitting a number of, of potholes, slowing our response down. And then, of course, bad for business. Who's going to want to invest in the city of Los Angeles with these failed streets in place? Next slide.
And with that, and keep that in mind, $750 approximately per vehicle. The national average is 350 for any large city. And so the question is, why did we get here? How did we get here? How did we get so many streets in failed condition, and why wasn't it taken care of? And we can sit here and point the fingers all day long, but we really actually found a lot of the answers as well, rather than just pointing the fingers, and it's about a solution moving forward. But prior to 1998, we had what was called a visual inspection. That was literally a guy named Steve and a guy named Bob that were driving a van, and they had the windshield test, and they'd look out the van window, and Steve would look out the window and say, it looks like it's a 3. And they would write down, okay, that street's a 3. And then Bob said, no, I think it's a 4. Okay, that street's a 4. There was no true inventory, there was no way to measure the condition of the streets. And in 1998, the world changed with the introduction of MicroPaver. And now with MicroPaver, we actually have these vans that go out and measure every single street in the city of Los Angeles every three years. It's laser precision, it's scientific, it's an, it's an objective process, but they actually measured and then inventory, which is why you have mapped out in front of you, the condition of every street. We actually have it online, where you can go on and you can pull out not just the failed streets, but A, B, and C streets, it's all color-coded, it's all sorted by council district and neighborhood council district as well. So if you look at this, all the red, which is what we've given you, is the condition of your current streets in your council district. Those red mean that it's a DNF, a failed street, it can't be maintained anymore. So the method of maintenance is critical, and this is, if you pay any attention to some of this discussion, this is really important. And, and you're going to use this a lot when you're out in the field, talking to constituents. And people really want to know, well, why have, and this is a question you all get, and if you haven't, you will. Why is it that you haven't paved my street in 30 years or 40 years, but you pave my neighbor's street every fifth year or every seventh year? You're going to hear that a lot, you're going to see that a lot. And so we'll explain it to you. Essentially, if you've got a street, when we've got three systems, a slurry seal, which is a rubberized seal for cracks, you can slurry seal a street every seven years. Once a street is an A, B, or C condition, really the top C category, an A and B condition, we can slurry that every seven years, which will maintain that and incredibly extend the life of that street. Once it falls below that C average condition, then we've got to do a resurfacing. A resurfacing is just that, where we just take off the surface, we grind up the aggregate, we relay it down, pack it down, and it's a full resurface. We'll get into the cost of each one of these later on in the slides. And then the reconstruction, you're basically constructing the entire street. Once it falls into a D or F, a failed condition street, you've got to completely rebuild that street. Once it falls into that A or B condition, it falls out of that, we don't have the funds to do it. And so that's what we're going to go through and explain in the slides coming up as well. So what is the current condition of all of our streets? And if you go to the next slide, you'll see, these are the grades, this is the percentage of all the streets in the city of Los Angeles, of all the maps in front of you. 21% are an A condition, which means they have no cracking, no oxidation, no maintenance is required if it's an A condition street. 23% are in B condition, means there's minimal cracking, there's no base failure, and you can slurry seal, you can maintain that street within a seven-year timeframe. 18% are in C condition, which means there's minimal cracking, 0% to 5% base failure, and some resurfacing is required. Then you've got 13% or D condition, some cracking, 6% to 35% base failure, and you, you then need resurfacing and reconstruction. 25% are in F condition. So this is really what we're talking about. If you take the DNF conditions, 38%, or one-third of the entire infrastructure in the city of Los Angeles, is failed. So now you talk about the cost comparisons, and this is the critical thing that you want to share with people. And they say, well, why can't you just slurry over a failed street? It doesn't work, and we can't do it. The difference is this. The difference is, in an A or B condition street, when it's in slurry, you can, it costs about $26,000 a mile to fix in a slurry. So you can maintain a street every seven years at $26,000 a mile. Once it falls into a C or D condition, the number goes from 26,000 a mile to 250 to $650,000 price range, once it falls into a C or D condition. A failed street starts at $650,000 and goes to $2.5 million a mile. So with that, since 2005, we've actually maintained, and we're fully funding, all the streets that are in A and B condition, because we can slurry seal those at $26,000 a mile. The balance, that 60-year backlog that we never had an inventory for, that is the $3 billion, what we're talking about, because of the cost.
So if you look at the cost for repair, an estimated $3 billion amount to fix the failed, DNF-conditioned streets. And this body, this current fiscal year, has dedicated $135 million for maintenance only, and out of that, $135 million, 90% of it, again, goes to potholes, crack sealing, slurry sealing, asphalt overlay, asphalt overlays, and resurfacing. And if you look at this slide, with the cost of reconstruction being as much as 100 times more than slurry seal, the Bureau of Street Services dedicates about 90% of their resources to the more cost-effective maintenance of A, B, and C-conditioned streets. And our goal, of course, is to ensure, or Street Services' goal, is to ensure that our A, B, and C-conditioned streets don't fall into the DNF-conditioned streets where we won't have the ability to repair, reconstruct them as well. You're looking at getting, you're more bang for the buck, as they say, on maintenance techniques like filling potholes, slurry sealing, and resurfacing, and I think we beat that to death a little bit. And only, as I indicated, only 10% of the allocated funds go to the reconstruction of failed streets, which is nothing. I want to turn to, as I indicated earlier, I'm really proud of Mitch and I's effort on our outreach meetings, and Council President Wesson directed us to make every effort to educate the public Angelinos on this problem. And I don't think, I think Mitch and I agreed that we have not seen this extensive public outreach from any council members ever in the city of Los Angeles, and we're proud of that. As Chair of Public Works, I put the committee on the road, and we met at City Hall, Harbor Area, Valley, the Valley area, West Los Angeles, South LA, and East LA as well. We met with a number of community organizations. We heard loud and clear from our family members in the neighborhood council, and all the neighborhood councils, that, you know what, they wanted to be inclusive, they wanted to be a part of the problem-solving effort. We met with the LA Citywide Alliance for Neighborhood Councils, Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, the Harbor Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, Porter Ranch, North Hills, Granada Hills, the LA Bike Coalition, a number of business groups, the LA Chamber, VICA, CCA, Building Owners and Management Association, the Los Angeles Current Affairs Forum, a number of the labor groups, as you see before you in this slide, the trade, media as well. Met with the ed boards at the Daily News and the Times, a number of both radio and TV as well. And the academia as well, the professors at UCLA, and just know that Professor Lemer and Mr. Nicholsburg, the senior economist at UCLA, their, their reports are in your books today, that clearly indicates the need to fix our failed streets, but also an opportunity to create tens of thousands of jobs at the same time to boost our local economy efforts. And also, in our recent trip in the spring, Access DC--
Access--
Access DC. Mitch and I met with our colleagues in the federal government, both Senators Boxer and Feinstein, and a number of our local congress members, Tony Cardenas, Janice Hawn, Linda Sanchez, Brad Sherman, and Congresswoman, Congressmember Kevin McCarthy.
So what we heard back from these meetings is what we're with today is what's before you is the report. That's our joint report, and it's really what we're here to tell you, that it, it fell into three general categories. It fell into the scope of the proposal, the funding, efficiencies, and outreach. And with that, the scope of the proposal, people wanted to make sure that it included multimodal transit systems, complete streets, so we have pedestrian, cyclists, and walkability included and inclusive, green streets, where we have stormwater capture. We had a lot of environmentalists and green street enthusiasts and specialists speak at the last Public Works Committee meeting that supported the report as well. Great streets, as we've all seen done in Washington DC. The use of alternative paving materials to reduce heat and stop Los Angeles from that heat island effect. Possible incorporation of sidewalks and alleys, which we'll study as well. Attention to the aging population and mobility needs. The most important thing that we heard loud and clear is the pushback that we got from the residents on the funding sources. Everybody, pretty much across the board in all of these community meetings, particularly the neighborhood councils and the chambers alike, didn't want the revenue streams to come from any one particular source. They didn't want it on the backs of just property owners. They're willing to pay more. And everybody said they're willing and they understand that they're going to have to make the investment, that this is a true return on investment. And in fact, if you looked at all the other bonds that we've done in the past, whether it's been building fire stations, or police stations, or libraries, there's a direct benefit and a service benefit to that community, but there isn't a financial return on investment that the people paying it see immediately, unlike this one, where as you raise new revenue streams, they're going to see direct savings in the cost they're laying out in mobility, in repair, in ownership of vehicles. Their property values will go up, so they're going to see a direct ROI. With that, we're asking for various revenue streams to identify the obstacles and solutions to overcome them, from use fees, federal and state grants, the waste hauling franchise fee, and putting it on them as well. Developer agreements, spreading the cost to all residents, which is one thing that everybody shared. A local gas tax, or vehicle registration fee or tolls, where they make sense and where they're applicable, as well as partnerships with nonprofits, which is key, which is a lot of the green street initiatives that we saw those partnerships come out of.
And with the, such a huge bond measure, and the first time the city has undertaken this incredible infrastructure project, comes the importance of being transparent and instilling the trust in, in the, in the voters and Angelinos alike. So with that comes, with approval, if, if this is approved, a true citizens oversight committee. And, and we're looking for a citizens oversight committee that doesn't include only the City Hall insiders. We're going to branch out across the city of Los Angeles to include the stakeholders, including neighborhood council members, to ensure that this plan is implemented on time, under budget. As we've done in the past, colleagues, if you, if you look at our, our city bond programs, and I benefited from it, working in a brand-new police station down at the harbor, you look at the fire stations that were built, and the libraries that were built. And I, I think we owe it to the citizen oversight committee that ensured that these projects were done on time, under budget. You're also looking at creating efficiencies through right-of-way coordination software. This is a highlight for me, that a resident would be able to monitor when one of these failed streets will be fixed in, in the, in the neighborhood, just by clicking on, on the website or on, on your, your smartphone. Ultimately, you want to utilize best management practices from, again, the city bond programs, and, once, once, of course, this is implemented. And going back to creating a timeline, you may ask, well, okay, what's next? As you can see, what Kelly Lou did here in a great slide, it created a roadmap of trying to get this onto the, the November 2014 ballot. Of course, before us is that joint CAO and CLA report, that has a number of report-back items to see the feasibility of this proposal. We're going to continue community outreach. In fact, just next week, Mitch and I will be meeting with a number of labor groups, continuing to meet with a number of stakeholders across the city. And if you look at July 2 of next year, we're in a, it's the last day for council to adopt the motion requesting the city attorney to prepare resolutions placing the measure on the November 2014 ballot. And you, we have some, some timelines there, as you can see before you. But our ultimate goal is to get this on the November 2014 ballot. And just a couple weeks ago, maybe a week and a half ago, a number of Californians received an Amber Alert. And if I can send an alert to every resident's cell phone in Los Angeles, it would be hashtag SOSLA. If we don't elect to do this project now, the next time we consider this, it'll be, it'll cost $3 billion more. So time is of essence. The only option is this, is, is to move forward. What's not an option, colleagues, is to sit on our hands and do nothing. So with that, those are my closing remarks. I'll send it to my colleague, Mr. Englander, for his closing remarks.
Great, thank you very much. And just to close, if you think about one thing, if we can do one thing, if the voters of Los Angeles, if we can send something to the voters to do one thing, to fix the economy, to create tens of thousands of jobs, to have these environmental benefits, to ease traffic, and improve response times for emergencies, to help the environment, to clean up every community, to improve the overall quality of life by doing one thing, by fixing every single street in the city of Los Angeles for now, and for our children, and our children's children. So with that, we ask you for any questions, colleagues, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. We've heard them all.
Thank you both for your leadership and your hard work on this. Mr. Bonin of the 11th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Englander, Councilmember Buscagno, first of all, I want to commend you for the incredible work you have been doing on this. I think this is a phenomenal job. I really love the way you've taken this since it was first raised last year. I know Mitch, you've been working on this since we were both chiefs of staff, and it's a passion of yours, and Mr. Buscagno is head of Public Works Committee. This is probably one of the most important things we can do. It's also, because it's one of the most important things we can do, it has to be something we do right. And I'm very encouraged that you have broadened the scope of this to look at a few other things. I really love what you've talked about with the oversight committee. I particularly ask that the neighborhood council budget advocates be involved in that process. And I'm particularly eager to see in this, colleagues, cool pavement technology. We have, particularly those colleagues who represent the Valley, heat islands in, in the city of Los Angeles, where your air conditioning bills and your DWP bills are going up because our streets are absorbing heat. And we can use cool pavement technology to have the heat reflected, so that our bills are lower, and so that things work a lot better. But, you know, one of the things the city of Los Angeles has historically done wrong is that we think of streets as a way to move cars, and we don't think of streets as the backbones of our neighborhoods, and as the spine of, of our communities. And it's very important, I feel, when we do this, to look at not just how well cars can move, but how safe pedestrians are, how safe bicyclists are, and, and that we advocate complete streets. I'm particularly eager to see in this bond measure, an inclusion not just of the cooled pavement, but also of sidewalks. I think we only get one bite at the apple on this, and if we cannot deal with the, the crisis of confidence in the city that is created by the negligent, the negligence and the hazards of our sidewalks, we're in deep trouble. And I think it's key to pedestrian safety that we take care of our sidewalks. So if I were going to have a hashtag, it would be SOS, save our streets and sidewalks, LA. So I look forward to working with you guys on this. Again, kudos, great job.
Well, on, on the sidewalk issue, thank you, Councilmember Bonin. You're absolutely right, we have a dilemma and an issue with the sidewalk, as noted in a recent column by Steve Lopez in the LA Times. So with bonding an issue, bonding for fixing our sidewalks-- So with bonding an issue, bonding for fixing our sidewalks, we don't have an inventory of sidewalks. And when Street Services came back to Public Works, they came back with a price tag of $10 million, which was unacceptable. With technology today, I think we can do better. And, you know, it's a great point, absolutely, looking into that. And that's one of our report-back items as well, that we'll get back from the CAO and CLA's office.
And with that, Mike, home is where the hardest, but the streets are the arteries to get you there. Hashtag.
Hashtag, fix the potholes. Paul Corretts, 5th District.
Hey, just a couple of things. This is a great idea, and it's something Rich Llewellyn was always bugging me to try to look at. But we thought it would only work within our district because there was a wealthier constituency that could pay for it and do it as a pilot program. So I'm actually very excited that we're talking about trying to do it for the whole city. Now, this is something that has to pass on a ballot measure. And I'm wondering if any work has been done to assess whether there's any way that we can get the majority of our fellow citizens to support this.
Great question. So we actually, we did an initial poll benchmark to find out exactly where we were at and identify some of the concerns. It's also what we went out to the community to listen to as well. And we found that if we apply a lot of the opportunities and leverage the assets that we're looking at in terms of revenue streams and diversifying that, absolutely, people are willing to pay into it, but they want to ensure that there is true oversight. They also want to ensure, and this is one of the things we heard back in our research, is that if we do raise a revenue stream to do this, that it doesn't disappear into the black hole of the city budget, that we actually specifically earmark this and it's dedicated to only fixing the streets. With that, in clear and simple language, and we have true oversight and true citizen oversight with this, yes, without question.
Very good. Two other things, and hopefully if I run a second over, I'll be able to finish this. I know that one of the most problematic areas in terms of maintenance of streets is utility cuts and other cuts. And we have a rule now that you have to wait until everything's cleared, and then you have to wait for a year after the streets have been fixed to cut into them. Have we looked at both requiring that it be longer than a year so that we do less damage to our streets? And also, when we do those cuts, usually the repairs are really poor, and so if there's some way to include a requirement that those kind of cuts be done in a more professional way, so that they're then of the same quality as the rest of the street?
Clearly, Mr. Corretts, you've read all the questions that were brought to us by the community as well. So that's yet another one that often came up. That's something else, another ordinance, colleagues, that we have, that we've been working on together for over a year, is working with contract administration and ensuring that we're going after, there's 200 utilities, 200 utilities that actually cut into our streets with their subcontractors on any given day in the city of Los Angeles. There's no check and balance to ensure that they're doing to, they're doing and performing the work to our standards. Oftentimes, they don't have a street use inspector on-site inspecting it. And in fact, you may not know this, but after every time they cut into a street, and they can only cut into a street after it's been repaired after a year, not prior to a year, because it ruins the integrity of that street, but they're supposed to tag that street with a medallion, a marker to indicate who did the work and when they did it, so we can track them back if it wasn't done to standard. It's rare where you see one of these medallions in the streets of Los Angeles. So we've come up with a new ordinance, working with contract administration and the city attorney's office. That's going to be coming before you as well. It's going to identify a surety bonds and fix that problem to ensure that not only are they doing it to standards, but they're working together collaboratively to ensure they're not cutting into streets within that one-year timeframe unless it's an emergency.
But have you looked at, and your ordinance, obviously, is the perfect place to do it.
Yes.
Extending that beyond one year.
Beyond a year. We'd like to go to--
Maybe a two or three year.
We'd like to go to a two-year, and that's what we're looking at as well. And so we're studying the effects of a reconstructed street on the two-year moratorium unless it's an emergency. The most important thing is if they cut into it within the year, that it's repaired correctly. And that's the problem we've been faced with, is for the last 50 years, they haven't been. So we're fixing that now.
All right, Mr. Corretts, thank you so much. Mr. O'Farrell of the 13th District.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Buscagino and Englander. I'm so impressed with this. For 10 years, I was the Public Works Deputy for then-Councilmember Eric Garcetti. I could give you a literal tour and a virtual tour of our failed streets, our unapproved streets, our compromised streets, our alleys, et cetera. So you all presented on so much that I loved hearing, including the fact that you did extensive outreach after the initial announcement of this, and the town halls, the inclusion of a citizens oversight committee, which is critical. It worked for Propo, it worked for Echo Park Lake Project, and we did deliver it on time and under budget. So that's a critical piece. Also, the inclusion of some sidewalks and alleys, I think that's really important to several of the council districts, including my own. The job creation, good stuff. The environmental benefits, and as Councilmember Bonin mentioned, of the heat island effect, finally, a way to comprehensively deal with that with new technology, really important. I'm sure that the bicycle community also attended with relation to bike lanes, and that's an important consideration. I also want to commend Nazario Salsida and Gary Lee Moore for your work and input on this, really good stuff. And lastly, I would say this, if we can spend $2 billion a day, year after year, in Iraq, we can come up with a way to appropriate $3 billion just one time for new streets in the city of Los Angeles. So I think you're headed in the right direction, and I commend you for this wonderful report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Parks of the 8th District.
Thank you very much. I would just ask, when you look at the funding sources, one of the things that we've asked over and over is that many districts have a tremendous amount of development, and they have traffic mitigation funds. And we often ignore those funds and use citywide money to fix their streets and sidewalks and things like that. It would appear that money should be put in the equation, because in many instances, that's what it was given by the developers. But to give you an example, Santa Monica Boulevard, the city spent $125 million to separate it and fix it of all citywide money. No mitigation of those funds came from their local traffic mitigation funds or development funds. And so I just throw that out when you look for a source.
Thanks, Mr. Parks, for that comment. And again, that was another key concern that was raised in our outreach efforts. And in that, one of the report-backs is to look at development agreements in helping fund another part of the revenue source to fix our failed streets. So we appreciate that, and that's part of the, we're anxious to get back, to get that report back on it.
Very good. Mr. Blumenfeld of the 3rd District, West Samford.
All right. Well, first, I want to really commend you guys for putting this together. This is fabulous. It is so important, as was mentioned, I want to echo and join the chorus about the quality of life possibilities, the environmental possibilities, the goods movement and business possibilities, all just show how this would be critically important. And any one of those things, it makes it worth the price tag in terms of the quality of life and the business. But what I think was really good about your presentation, and what's important as we move forward, is we point out the hard, cold cash issues, how this is actually cost beneficial to the city and to all of us, not just because you could look at the money that the businesses will save in terms of goods movement, but as you pointed out, just the potholes alone, the cost of potholes, it was an important figure, you said $746 per motorist per year. That's less than any bond you would imagine of what people are paying for. So that piece alone, people could save money by investing in a bond instead of investing in car maintenance. And then the other aspect of that, just in terms of the, you know, I like to look at the numbers, I like the way you had the cost comparison showing, one of the truisms of infrastructure generally, and I've been a big advocate for infrastructure for many years in terms of roads and bridges and everything else, is that most of the costs for infrastructure come in the last 15% of the lifecycle of any given infrastructure. And that is certainly true with streets, and it certainly is true the way you show it in your cost comparison here. So part of the way of selling this is just pointing out those numbers in terms of the amount that we can save by not pushing those streets into that last lifecycle where the maintenance cost is so high, would more than pay for this initiative. And then the last point, you know, something that Mr. Corretts said, is would a majority of the people support this? Unfortunately, right now, it requires a 2/3 supermajority to get folks to support this. That is, as you know, something I've worked with you guys in, and worked in this council supported recently, got a measure in Sacramento to change that, to make it what is much more reasonable, just a majority of folks. But I think this is so compelling that even if it got on the ballot and ACA doesn't pass in this, that we can get 2/3 for this. We should, I mean, we should be able to get 99% for this because it is so compelling. So thank you for bringing it forward, and know that I want to work with you on it in every way possible to make it a reality.
Mr. Felipe Fuentes of the 7th District.
Thank you, President Labonge. And I also want to add my thanks to the two of you for the work, but more so for your ability to understand that we needed to sort of slow this process down last year, or rather, earlier this year, to understand what it is that we can do to make this process hopefully more acceptable to the voters. And I think Mr. Blumenfeld hit it right on the head. We do have a tough road to hoe here in terms of actually being able to get--
Correction, tough road to pave, not hoe. We were trying to pave them.
Well, if you visit CD7, the roads need to be hoad.
I have, I have.
We just paved dirt roads in most of my district, which is why I'm so excited to hear the conversation. But I think in order to be able to be successful, we're going to have to earn that 2/3 vote, which really does mean a real hard look at how we're doing the services and how we're going to do them if we're lucky enough to earn the support of our voters. Since I see that staff's present, I wanted to see if I can get somebody from Street Services to come and help me understand what the latest is on our sidewalks. This council will remember that I authored legislation that would prevent municipalities like Los Angeles from shifting the liability of sidewalk, sidewalk repair from the city to the owner, and this council opposed my legislation. So I just want to say hi. I'm here to talk more about sidewalks. And I think Mr. Bonin really sort of hit it on the head here, that we really do need to figure out how to offer the most inclusive package to our voters in order to earn their support. And so I wanted to see from Street Services where we were in terms of our metrics of understanding exactly how long it will take before we understand how many sidewalks need to be addressed, and how soon will we know a dollar amount. The last report that I read in the media was that it was about three years and $10 million worth of study just to understand where we were. I'm hoping that you have an update for us.
Good morning, Councilmember Fuentes and Nazario Salsida, Director of the Bureau of Street Services. Real quick, we don't have a lot of information about sidewalk. The reality is, the only information that we have is based on a study that was completed in the late 1990s. At that point, it was determined that there are approximately 10,750 miles of sidewalk. That's equivalent, of course, to building a sidewalk between here and Paris, France, and coming back, you know, to LA. Approximately, it is estimated that 40% of those 10,750 miles of sidewalk need reconstruction, not just repair, but reconstruction. And reconstruction means the removal of the existing sidewalk, you know, recreating and reconstruction of that particular segment of the sidewalk. We met with numerous agencies that are responsible for creating inventories in terms of sidewalks, and they estimated that it would take approximately between 18 months and two years to complete a survey of the city of Los Angeles sidewalk. So that's where we are right now.
And if I could answer, address that, if you compare that to the streets, by the way, the sidewalks is one of the asks in the report back to give us exactly how we get there, because it's critically important, and particularly as it pertains to mobility and ADA compliance and all those other issues. But if you compare that to the streets and the inventory he mentioned, again, in 1988 was the introduction of micropaver. Prior to that, we didn't have an inventory of the streets, we had the windshield test. Right now, we have a windshield test on sidewalks. We've got to come up with a scientific way, a way to calculate, measure, matrix, database, inventory, and cost out all the sidewalks. But what we're looking for is not all the answers to that before we begin. So we know, for example, where major slip and falls have happened, we know with certainty where we've paid out lawsuits, we know some of those already, many of those are already in our databases. We'd like to start now doing something more, and then work our way towards having a full inventory.
Well, and I will be brief, Mr. President. I want to sort of congratulate you on noticing sort of the liability that's associated with some of these broken sort of infrastructure, let's just say, not just sidewalks, but streets. But if we can figure out, as the analysis comes back from a liability perspective to the city of Los Angeles, not just identifying where these repairs need to be made, but where we get the most bang for our buck. And I'm really excited that you two are working on this, because I have a lot of ideas that I want to help in trying to get this sort of remediated. But we may want to consider a phased-in approach, because, again, we've got to, I think Mr. Buscagino said exactly right, we can't afford not to do something here. But the question becomes, do we have to do it all now? I like to think yes, but the 2/3 vote threshold really concerns me, and I do want to congratulate Mr. Blumenfeld for his ACA in Sacramento, because that hopefully will go a long way for our colleagues who represent us in Sacramento to try to figure out how to lower the threshold so we can be successful. But I'm very excited about what you two are doing and looking forward to your product.
With all your enthusiasm, Councilman, we have a call-in number on Monday mornings at 8:00 AM. We've been calling in since November, every single Monday, so we'll give you that number as well.
Call me, maybe.
Call me, maybe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corretts, again in the 5th District for the second time.
Yeah, just one last thing, because we ran out of time in the first round. There's a fellow named George Epstein, I don't know if either of you have been in contact with him. He's a retired engineer, and he's been talking with the department about a process that would strengthen our asphalt product. And I think it's at a point, if I recall correctly, where there would need to be about $80,000 allocated to study it. So you somehow, I think, need to connect with this process if we're going to do this kind of massive street repair, if there actually is an asphalt product that can be improved and strengthened. We definitely want to know that and have that in the works before you start this process of actually rebuilding the streets.
Very good. Send that memo to him so that you know that.
Well, definitely. And with that, just so you know, we actually met with the California Asphalt Association. In fact, I was their keynote speaker at their annual Christmas party on this very issue.
It's exciting.
It was exciting. But with that, we learned a lot. And so I met all of the asphalt manufacturers here in California at the association. We've been in constant contact with them. There are a lot of different products that are being manufactured with different materials, and the city is constantly, in fact, we have our own labs here in Los Angeles where we test a lot of those here. And a lot of them don't stand up to that test. In fact, one of those new technologies that was proven to be one of the latest and greatest environmental benefits, we just tested in my district on Wilbur. We ended up just ripping it up and putting in our own slurry again because it failed and it didn't work. But there are a lot of new products always coming online, and so we're constantly meeting with the industry and testing those in our labs. And then if they make it out of the lab, we actually test them on our streets as well. So we'll make sure we continue those communications.
Yeah, I think it's the funding for the lab test on this that we're talking about. And also, since we're in the process, I don't know if we've actually started yet, of replacing our old dilapidated asphalt plant. I don't know if we're cutting any corners on that, but obviously, again, if we're talking about undertaking a project this massive--
It would have to be part of--
We should revisit what we're doing to make sure it's large enough to handle this.
That's part of the report as well.
I look forward to working with both of you, all of us should work with, make sure you assign your deputies, your public works deputies, to this effort. And Mr. Salsida, I thank Crew 152 and 252 and 352, the great work they're doing in Sherman Oaks today in this hour, make it a better street. All right, that completes that. Thank you for the report. Mr. Clerk, I want to call item number three.
Mr. President, before doing so, there are recommendations before you in regards to that matter.
All right. Note, on the public comment, it was in committee, it fulfilled the requirement. We thank you. There'll be a number of outreach meetings you could participate in the future. Thank you very much.
Real quick, we--
Mr. Englander.
The boards before all of you, those are all for you to keep for your office, and we ask for your eye vote for this report. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, explain what we need to do.
Mr. President, it would, now would be the time to open the roll.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
15 eyes, so ordered. Thank you.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number three, called Special Card.
And as Mr. Salsida, Mr. Moore, thank you both, city engineer and public works directors. And as Mr. Salsito, Mr. Moore, thank you both, City Engineer and Public Works Director, Salsito. Christopher McKinnon, Stanley Hoffman, Terry Cowan, and Juan Akala.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. I am better at writing than speaking, so I will read something briefly. My only wish is that Councilmembers Boscano and Englander were here 13 years ago, which is how long I've been trying to get my street repaved. With the last four spent on organizing the proposed Assessment District before you now and working with Bureau of Engineering to get a curb and road design. What's not mentioned is that Bureau of Street Services will not or cannot rebuild an F's failed street without the property owners whose responsibility it is now to rebuild their deteriorated curbs with new standard curb and gutter. If our vote passes or not, I would like to thank the Bureau of Engineering, especially Randy Price, who did the Assessment District calculations, and Carl De La Fuente, who is the project manager and the head of the department, Gary Lee Moore, for their tireless dedication to the project, and Bureau of Street Services, Keith Mozy and others, and especially the Department Head Nazario Sosa, who we wind to periodically. If the no vote prevails, then we are back to minus square one with no help for funding the curbs in sight. Either way, if the proposed Save Our Streets 3 billion bond issue goes forward, I would suggest that failed curbs also be included so the Bureau of Street Services can do the proper job in rebuilding the F streets. For us, the bond is too late to wait for something. Something has to be done now. So, if this body can find a great, complete, cool, green, $1 million grant, then that would be much appreciated. And if there are any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Stanley Hoffman.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Stan Hoffman. I live at 3980 East Boulevard within the Assessment District for the curbs. I've been working with Chris McKinnon and our neighbors for the past four to five years to get the curb assessment because we understand from Bureau of Street Services that it's necessary so we can get our road rebuilt, which is at an F standard. We are very much in support of this because we know that the roads will become safer, more functional, better able to handle the storm flows, more aesthetic, and also improve our property values. We hope it passes, and I want to make two recommendations that can possibly further lower our costs. Number one, the current interest rate on the bond, in other words, if you don't pay the assessment off at front, you get a bond over 10 years. The interest rate is currently 9%. We understand that that can be adjusted by council policy, and we hope that you take a look at that and get an interest rate that's more in line with the current market. And number two, we understand that part of the road rebuild and the curb rebuild will improve the regional flow of water through the area. Not only is the road important for traffic and safety, but it's also important for drainage. And we would hope that you could look at, if you look at the total cost, you'll see that about approximately 10% is incidentals. And what that means is, that is the labor that's credited for the Bureau of Street Services or the engineering to do the design. And we're hoping that that payment or that cost could be mitigated and further lower our assessment. And thank you very much for your consideration, and thanks very much to the Engineering Department for helping us with this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cowden. Ms. Cowden, excuse me, Terry.
My name's Carrie Cowden. I live at 3957 East Boulevard. And as much as everything my esteemed neighbors have said is true as far as, we have an F street. My family purchased the home in 1962. At that time, it wasn't an F street. Not one thing was ever done, and that's, no one in this room is responsible for that. But that is a clear fact. And the problem with the assessment is, there are a lot of homes in this particular area that are owned by people that have fixed incomes. Personally, I am a high school art teacher that is not working. My husband is a contractor that is not working very much. What we have here are assessments for each one of these neighbors that is pretty high for, if you have like your little bumper, that's it. And if you have to pay interest or anything, it's not a possibility for a lot of people. As much as I'd like to see this happen, some of our neighbors have redone their curbs and spent a lot of money, and they're being assessed because it's like, oh, it wasn't done right, not for what we have to do. You're going to get it ripped out and you're going to pay again. So, that part isn't really good either. So, what we would like is to be included in that bond so that we, this isn't a major hardship because down the road, you see how long it takes things to happen. Some of these people may not even see it happen. Both of my in-laws are passed. They were promised years ago, oh yeah, we're going to get this done, and everyone worked very hard to that end, and our neighbors have worked hard, and they're just saying like, let's just do it. I would love to say, oh, just do it, but there are too many other people involved here, and, you know, we are in an economy right now that is really hurting, as we all know, and as one of the gentlemen said, let's get jobs for everybody. Yes, let's do that. But please consider this, and we don't even know how the votes, we don't know until you read them later on, but please consider that this will be a major hardship. Thank you very much.
Juan Akala.
I was astonished by a teacher out of work, art teacher. I graduated from Cal State Long Beach. I went to the School of Arts first.
We're off topic, Mr. President.
Oh, yeah, that's right. She got me off topic. I'm sorry. Well, the topic is fixing the streets once again and the sidewalks. I heard you say that you spent $10 million on studying the fixing of the sidewalks. Why didn't you just spend $10 million fixing the sidewalks? Isn't that stupid? Am I the only one stupid here, or are you stupid, or are we all stupid? You keep talking about billions, millions, trillions on studies to do nothing because you don't get anything done. You just do the study and it doesn't get done. I'm talking about this subject.
Sergeant, would you assist the man behind him? He's interrupting the speaker.
What? Oh, he's my advisor. He's really a good person. He's better than you guys because you keep taking our money in any way you can. It's a bullshit system. And I'm glad that now we can curse since August 7th because we're going to be cursing.
All right, complete your comments on this item.
Okay, on this item, we should fix the streets effectively. We should not do studies to maybe someday fix the streets.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Mello.
The State of California has laws, and these laws are to be abided by this council to enforce sidewalks to be repaired, altered streets to be repaired, sidewalks especially to be accessible. But during this unprecedented time of financial lack of monies, $10 million going to waste for administrative paperwork, that's a lot of... And we must take into consideration, what idea do we have to put into the public that it would be best to spend tax-paying dollars on this? No. The remedy for this is take a percentage out of all your different entities and use a calculation by this percentage to come up with this money that the Department of Justice has already told you sidewalks should all be accessible for every person, whether we are disabled... Hold on, I'm being interrupted. Thank you, sir. Thank you for interrupting. Now, going back to my comment, sidewalks again, we cannot afford to ask the state and the federal government to give us money when we say we don't have money.
This is a specific issue in Venice on improvement.
Okay, so going back to Venice now, on the specific issue of sidewalks, let's get it right. Let's get it straight. Find the monies from your own budget and fix the problem on Venice. Thank you.
Thank you. From the Kingdom Warrior, Mellow Desire, is that correct?
Good morning. My name is Mellow Desire. I'm a filmmaker for inner-city youths. I come here to really be the voice of the children, the youths, the felons, who are not giving, not one iota of time like this as sidewalks.
If I could just correct you on a specific issue of a neighborhood Venice-area improvement.
Yes. Okay, so Venice, as far as we're concerned, the Lahuenas and two gang members over there as well, we need help as far as helping these youths in Venice Park as well rather than the sidewalks. So, as far as I'm concerned, everything that I have to state has everything to do...
Mr. President, the speaker is off topic.
The topic as far as sidewalk renovations and budgeting for that, you have enough money to restructure historical sidewalks, historical buildings, architecture, but human life, how much does that cost?
Mr. President, we're off topic.
Thank you, we're off topic. This is an assessment for specific parcels of land on that. If you would like to speak to a deputy, you could go right over to an assistant here on Council floor to help you. Okay? Thank you, public comment. We'll wait for that. That completes the cards on this issue. I don't have your card. Well, Sergeant, do you have a card? We have a card? Because I need a card, sir. I need a card. Sergeant, do you have a card for this man? Well, I want you to follow procedures, okay? All right? You pay attention to what we're doing down here, David, and then we can get it done right. Thank you very much for the card.
Okay, what a waste of time that was. Okay, now, I reluctantly support this item. First of all, I will go on record to say that I don't have to pay for this, so I may as well support it anyway. Now, of course, the city wastes and squanders all its money, so now they can't fix the sidewalks. But Venice bears the brunt of much of America that comes here, and the streets take a lot. And you know what? I always joke about the city. Oh, you can tell where Santa Monica ends and LA starts. You can tell by the cracked sidewalks. You don't need signs to tell. So, yes, yes, if the people are... Now, I want to make sure that if you vote yes and that the people are being assessed with money to fix the sidewalks in their area, the curbs and whatnot that's desperately needed, there's somebody known as Dr. W. Edwards Deming, the forefather of quality management. And I would like any contractor you hire, there's something known as ISO 900. It's a quality standard measurement. So, in other words, if you get a contractor, you go, excuse me, do you use ISO 900? If they say no, don't use them.
All right, that completes our public comment. Mr. Bonin.
Thanks, colleagues. I just want to underscore what this issue is about. There is a way in which this issue is absolutely routine, and there is a way in which this issue is absolutely ridiculous. This is an assessment, and we routinely have assessments of various types before the council. We're going to move this forward today, and then they will count the votes, and we'll figure out if the assessment passes or fails. And then, there's a way in which this is bang-your-head-on-the-desk absurd. These folks in my community here in Mar Vista have failed streets, and the city will not repair the streets until the constituents themselves tax themselves to fix the nearby curb. It's absolutely ridiculous. It is a bad situation, and I want to commend Chris McKinnon and Stanley Hoffman from my district for standing up and trying to make the best out of a series of bad and horrible and ridiculous options. I mean, this just shows how bad our backlog of infrastructure is in this city. Again, I want to thank Chris and Stanley for all their work on this. We'll find out if this passes or not. This is the kind of thing that folks are stepping up and willing to do, but ultimately, it's the kind of thing they shouldn't have to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
15 eyes, so ordered. Next item.
Item 29, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sachs, is Arnold Sachs still here? Followed by Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Item 29 refers to disillusionment, the dissolving of the Westwood Village Maintenance District. So, I guess the structural events that they were undertaking will now be taken over by the Westwood Village Business Improvement District. But what's really, just to change my subject, what's fascinating, especially based on the comments by Councilman Bonin, the assessment that he just talked about was for curbs. This mentions the Westwood Village Sidewalk Maintenance District contract. And again, I brought up numerous times how the council has talked about right-of-way for bicycles, meaning sidewalks. So, you have an assessment for curbs, you have street failures, you have right-of-way, which is not the street and not the curb and not the median section where people want to grow vegetables, but the sidewalk, which is not the median section where people want to grow vegetables, nor is it the curb, nor is it the street. That's quite a bundle of definitions for a property owner to cycle through. So, the problem here is funding. And you say funding for tomatoes when it's tomatoes. You say funding when it's potatoes when it's potatoes. What's going on? Do we have a direction for the Westwood Business Improvement District? And by the way, who's the oversight for this sidewalk maintenance?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. Zuma Dog.
And the next item up for bid on the City Council, Price is Right, dissolution of the Westwood Village Maintenance District. Zuma Dog rolls. Womp, 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 womp. Sorry, Westwood, it's over. Let me just make a sad commentary on Westwood, Paul Coretts' district. So sad what used to be the vibrant engine of economic vibrancy in the city. A regional tourist attraction now tumbleweed connection, dead, ain't coming back. Things like the Third Street Promenade killed it. Nobody's going there, so unfortunately, yeah, kill the money for the Maintenance District. It's over, okay? My good friends that are in Westwood that are doing everything, you're not going to bring back the buggy whip. You're not going to be bringing back vinyl record stores. You're not bringing back Westwood. I'm sorry, people. Pull the maintenance.
Okay, let's open the roll on this one. Mr. Coretts, before we open the roll totally.
Just for the record, to correct the misinformation just provided by the speaker, there's a bid in Westwood Village. It pays for all this maintenance. The money that used to go into this district now goes into the bid, so we would be double charging and double maintaining unless we eliminated this former district. So, it's not because we're doing less, it's actually because we're doing more in Westwood Village and trying to indeed bring it back to its former glory.
Absolutely. Go Bruins out in Westwood, and good work, Mr. Coretts. Thanks for that clarification. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
15 eyes. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 31, called Special by Councilmember Parks and for Cards. And there is an amended motion, 31A, that has been distributed and is now before council for consideration.
We're going to take the cards first, Mr. Parks, Mr. Dog, followed by Mr. Sachs, followed by Mr. Walsh on 31.
Motion.
You have one minute, David.
Thank you. Now, regarding the Pensions, California Pension Act, I'm going to get right to it. They're giving back. They ain't getting what's promised. It doesn't matter how honorable anybody wants to be. Here's what happened, and I came here since 2006. Warning... And I came here since 2006, warning that the city, the pension money, is invested in alternative investments in Wall Street. That's like a wink and a smile shady bullshit that, like, these people. And Viarigos' pension appointments, that voted the money into the shill things that went bust on Wall Street. You remember when I came in here and said, oh, did you hear the city lost billions and billions and billions of the pension money when Wall Street went bust? So yeah, you know what? When I grew up as a kid, I heard pensions, that's like sacred money that is not supposed to be invested in risky non-investment. It's supposed to be there for sure, no matter what. This is unbelievable. So now, no, you know, you can say whatever you want, the people aren't going to be getting the money that was promised all their life because the city don't have it, and they ain't going to get it back. So isn't that a shame?
All right, Mr. Walsh is here and ready. Mr. Sachs, please be ready next. Thank you, Mr. Sachs. There's a seat right up in front for you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a very complex matter concerning pensions and Sacramento. It was written by Mr. Parks, who has the nerve, I think he gets, what, three-quarters of a million-dollar pension? And he's the watchdog? The watchdog gets three-quarters of a million-dollar pension? But remember, when we add to the pension debt, we are therefore neglecting our roads. That's why we got into this position, why our streets and roads are worse than Chicago, worse than New York, worse than Philadelphia. Cities that are actually more corrupt than we are, when it comes to the issue of maintaining their sidewalks, are less corrupt than we are. How can you figure that out? Don't be a fool, vote no on any street repair. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you, good, good morning, Arnold Sachs. This actually refers to the problem that MTA is facing now with its, with its funding from the federal government. And what's interesting is when this legislation was proposed, the Board of Supervisors, who also happened to sit on the Board of MTA, were in favor of this legislation. So you wonder, their county, their county council, is the county council for Metro, wouldn't they get input from their county council saying, you know, if we authorize this legislation and it passes, we are going to have a problem down the line with our Metro employees and their requirements that have been bargained for? And then you have to think in terms of, well, they're on strike, or they're considering a strike, or they already had a strike in San Francisco. And those were Metro employees, transit employees, and they're striking over pension benefits. Well, how are they able to strike over pension benefits? Yet the city of L.A. has federal funds that are dependent on this legislation changing so that it will not affect the transit employees in the city of L.A. It makes you wonder who's on first, oh, what's on second? I don't know, third base. Closing the barn doors after the horses have not only run away but turned into bin carcasses is a city council and county board of supervisors distinct mark of improvement.
All right, that completes the public comment card on this issue. Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, if I may, during the last set of speakers.
Thank you.
Substitute motion 31 has been circulated. Again, substitute motion 31 has been circulated.
Mr. Parks, thank you. Followed by Mr. Kerkorian.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd ask that, on, and Mr. Kerkorian will speak on his substitute motion, but that, the motion that's before us is very narrowly directed towards a specific piece of legislation. We understand that there's a lot of conferences going on to alter that legislation, but it is a major issue as it relates to the potential loss of significant dollars on our transportation system. And let me ask staff CLA to come up and explain the nuances as it relates to the potential
Mr. Parks, the nuance as it relates to the, well, the issue before you is that because of the new state pension tier, the transit employees have asserted that it violates federal law relative to some labor provisions for transit employees that are protected by a specific section of federal law. As a result, the Department of Labor has said that it is in violation of that section and is going to, and therefore, the federal government will withhold transit funding from various agencies in California, including Metro, and that would impact the downtown connector, the Crenshaw Line amongst others.
And also, could you explain the issue that we're wrestling with as it relates to the disagreement from the state's standpoint and our disagreement as to whether new employees can be represented by a union that they don't belong to?
Well, yes, we, we have asserted and continue to assert that pension, pension tier for new employees is, is not subject to meet and confer because it, it would apply to employees that don't work here yet. The difficulty with the state is there are provisions with the state pension reform that would impact current employees. Now, I, what we don't know is exactly the nature of the claims and the status of the litigation, et cetera. But in our report, we make it very clear that, that what we do recommend is supporting legislative action that would ensure that the money flows, but we make it very clear that we're not concurring that, in fact, meeting and confer is required for new employees on a pension tier.
Thank you. And I would just move that we receive and file the item on the agenda, the CLA report in 31A, and Mr. Kerkorian will deal with 31B.
Mr. Kerkorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Parks, for bringing this matter before us, members. This is exceptionally important to the city of Los Angeles and to the county and the entire state of California. The situation arose when the Governor's Pension Reform Act took effect. The United States Department of Labor made a determination that that impacted on collectively bargained pension rights. And upon making that finding, the United States Department of Transportation made the decision, because of that finding, that it could not release transportation grant funding to any agency in California that was impacted by PEPRA. That includes the Metropolitan Transportation Agency. It includes many other agencies up and down the state of California. So that critically important transportation infrastructure projects that are about to go, about to begin, are going to be held up or possibly defunded because of this finding by the Labor Department about the impact of PEPRA. So Assemblymember Alejo introduced a bill, which is what prompted Mr. Parks's motion of support for the Alejo bill. That bill would exempt transit employees who are subject to this federal law from PEPRA. That's one option. But there are many other options to address this issue, possibly other legislative fixes in Sacramento. Some of the transit agencies have considered the possibility of, of litigation and, and other remedies. So it's a critically important issue that we need to address, that the state needs to address. Whether the Alejo bill is the right vehicle or not is still being discussed. So while I'm very much supportive of moving forward with, with that option, the substitute motion simply provides that the council is in support of any measures that would relieve the state from this burden of having its grant funding held up because of the impacts of, of PEPRA. So I'd ask for your eye vote on the substitute motion.
All right, there's a substitute motion. No speakers on the Q.
Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, if I may, substitute motion 31 is now before council. Council must first vote on whether to substitute, and then if in fact it, it does pass, vote on the matter itself.
Got it.
So again, two votes, first on whether to substitute.
All right, let's open the roll on substitution. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, council must now vote on the matter itself.
Let's open that matter. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That brings council to item 32, called Special for Cards.
All right, we're going to hold right now because I want to get public comment. We're at the noon hour. Mr. Herman for public comment. Mr. Herman, followed by Jay Handel, followed by Sid. Where's Sid? And Arnold Sachs. We got it right now. Thank you. Sid, you're up in a minute.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jay Handel. I'm the chair of the Budget Advocate Citywide for your Neighborhood Council System. I, I just came today because, number one, I wanted to thank all the council members for taking the Neighborhood Council's request very carefully and into heart. Your DWP negotiations seem to be going better than they were a week ago and better than they were two months ago. So we think that your vigilance is what's going to bring this city back to be the great city that it should be, that it has not been. And by bringing all of these unions, again, this is the first of many pieces, this is, this is the opportunity to, for the big fix overall, and you've begun that now. And you need to continue to do that by fixing some of the rest of the DWP issues and then translating that down into the coalition and all of the others. We urge you, remember, a fair wage for our employees. They have to be able to have a fair wage. Good benefits for our employees because they have to be able to know their safe and their families are safe. At the same time, services for the people besides your employees, the rest of your city family, those of us who stand on the streets, we want our services back. So when you do these negotiations, remember, they have health care, some people here don't. Some people have to make the decision whether to pay the power bill or eat for that day and feed their children. So we see the salaries, we know what people are really worth, and we know we have great employees in this city. But we also know we have to bring our services back, and we want you to keep that balance when you do the rest of your negotiations and close out DWP's negotiations and work on the other ones. So again, we're, we're just looking forward to you guys, this new group and those who have remained, to bring this city back to the stature that it should be and, and has been in the past. Thank you very much.
The clock started, but it's okay because Mr. Weezer is not here. And the subject that I keep continuing to talk about and enforce is why hasn't the city attorney taken any action to prevent sexual harassment in City Hall? It's a big deal when you have family members that work in the city, when you have friends that work in the city. So we have to conduct business, basically, on business. It's offensive when a sexual harassment, an alleged sexual harassment is being spoken about here in the biggest city in the world, Los Angeles. Oh, I'm sorry, second biggest. Let's go back, New York. Let's go back, Don Stewart. Let's go back, Howard Stern. Fast forward. Again, sexual harassment is a big deal. And all of you as councilmen are to be blamed if you don't take an action. Something should be said and done. And in closing argument about this, you have the potential power. There are ordinances that says you can be removed, you can exit, you can step down. And my friend MC, Michael Kerkorian, put it very upfront. If you don't like to hear what we're here to communicate with you about, you don't want to answer our calls, you don't want to take our emails, then get out. And I'm under the tone of what I have to say, Mr. President. So going back to my interruption, Mr. President, is this. Follow the ordinance, protect the public. We should not have to hear of these allegations at City Hall. Enough's enough. Go away, Mr. Weezer, go away.
Mr. Sachs. Sid, you're next.
Yes, thank you. Good, good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Again, a lot of discussion about the DWP contract that's been brought forth, but actually, all that's really left to do is erase the chalk lines around that body. What's actually really more important and what people really don't take into account is the coalition that was brought up when the mayor signed his last budget, how they got a 25% pay raise from a lot of the people who were involved in the DWP budget process for this new contract. And as the previous speaker just mentioned about this, so, this alleged sexual harassment lawsuit, what was interesting to me in that story actually was the fact that the staffer started at $49,000 a year, and when she left in 2013, she was making $133,000 a year. Where'd the money come from? During that timeframe, there were two instances where the word bankruptcy was brought out. We had early retirement programs. We had transfers to DWP. And how do people get transferred 1,500 strong? What are they doing at DWP that they would have 1,500 openings for city employees to take over? And what happens to the jobs in the city that 1,500 employees leave? It's like a vacuum is created that nobody wants to answer. And I think the vacuum actually is between the ears of a lot of city councilmen. It's important for the public to really understand that talking, what it, what its supervisor or yours last year said, don't confuse activity for achievement.
Sid, your turn, Sid. And for my help and benefit, please pronounce your last name.
Maxudian.
Thank you. Please continue.
Welcome. Good afternoon, gentlemen, council members. I didn't have the opportunity to discuss the matter on the item 23 as it was stated. First, let me thank Mr. Englander and Mr. Busciano for their leadership in that, in their effort to see the sidewalks and the streets initiatives go forward. Hopefully, it will be done in good faith. One of my comments on this particular matter is the following, is that this is no-brainer, the one that I've been speaking about for the past three weeks, the Hill Street, the San Vincent Court. It's one of those examples where no taxpayers' money is needed whatsoever. I will reiterate, it's 100% going to be funded by private money, which will come from Mr. Pilavjan, which is the part-owner and the managing partner of San Vincent Alley and the building surrounding it. Another thing is that this particular project can be done, and Mr. Huesar is working on this diligently. I got a phone call this morning while I was in the council chambers that he's making a personal attempt to hear from Mr. DeLijani himself today. And also, I'll be attending a, a meeting this afternoon at the Public Works Committee to discuss furthermore. And I'm sure that all of you received my pamphlet, which was 11 pages, with a three-page letter addressing the issues at hand. My main concern is, gentlemen and ladies, is that there is the problem of the ADA. Let's get the consensus and the parties and the individuals together before a handicap or ADA issue rises and a lawsuit visits the council and the building owners that surrounds it. This can be prevented. So I hope that all of you will show some concern regarding future lawsuits, and since the remedies that I represented here, eloquently at least, end, I'm not going to say whose fault it is so far, but well, let's move forward and do this right for the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, what I want to do, I want to get some of these items up right now on card calls. I'm going to come out of public comment right now. I want to go back to item number 32. Dr. Williams, please, you've been waiting patiently since this morning, Mr. Herman and Mr. Walsh. Is Mr. Walsh still here? One minute, John, one minute, thank you.
Yo soy presente. This is item 32. Want to know more about it? Go to HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns pedestrian improvements. And you know, this is what, they want you to spend $3 billion bonded indebtedness, total cost $8 billion when you pay. But I want to say thank you, this is This is from Sleazy or Weezer's district, Jose 14th. At least he's paying attention to his people. He's not waiting for street improvements for a bond to pass. Jose Sleazy or Weezer has now put the improvements now. So if you're living the 14th district, there's no reason for you to vote for this because you're getting your improvements now. Where are the other 14?
Dr. Tom Williams, Mr. Herman, come up now.
Motion, Mr. Weezer, relative to the funding for pedestrian improvements in existing medians at the intersection of Soto and Morango for curb cuts, accessibility. I'm sorry. Regarding improvements, we all heard the conversation earlier about the new idea of what we can do, right, Mr. Englander, with that booklet? If we use that booklet and we apply the message within the booklet, our council can be effective, especially our councilman, Mr. Weezer, will be very effective in the method of why funding for pedestrians, blah, blah, blah. It's kind of late. Need my sugar, need my food. Excuse me. But again, Mr. Weezer, relative to funding for pedestrian improvements in existing medians, I'm sure the Department of Justice under ADA will not approve in the idea of discrimination if you do not follow their guidelines. Guidelines with regulations, codes that follow the state implementations, and furthermore, the amendments made by the ADA to improve our public sidewalks, our medians, our streets, our highways. I love California because it gives us the opportunity to voice our concerns when it comes to the improvements that, again, under motion under Jose Weezer, relative to the funding of pedestrian improvements in the existing medians at the intersection, Soto Street in Boyle Heights.
Dr. Tom Williams, passed. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna go back to public comment. How about Dr. Tom Williams now? You're first on the list right now. Dr. Williams?
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, Transportation Subcommittee Leader, I guess. We have a little bit of a problem with the Public Works Department, the Bureau of Engineering. We've held two meetings in El Cerrino, LA 32 Neighborhood Council area, and we've gotten the runaround. Oh, just wait until it's done, that is, in the year 2016. But we can't even get a project schedule for this month or next month. We don't know when this monster is going to come to the Soto Street Bridge demolition in LA 32 Neighborhood Council area. We're quite concerned about this because we've been trying to work with Bureau of Engineering, but we can't even get told when the notice to proceed was going to be issued last week. We can't even get an idea of what is going to happen to us and when the HO Rams are going to start breaking out the concrete and removing some of the largest steel sections in the city of Los Angeles. It was built as a trolley bridge. Now it's being demolished, and we're gonna get an intersection sometime in 2016. However, we can't figure out when the buses are going to be relocated, when the school buses are going to have to be redirected, and when the detours are going to come, and when the noise, the dust, the exhaust. And, oh, by the way, they did tell us that they would allow one lane each way for Huntington Drive. If you ever take Huntington Drive, don't take it when the Bureau of Engineering starts its demolition of the Soto Street Bridge at the intersection of Soto, Mission, and Huntington Drive. We want to work with them, but they will not come to us, and we've tried to go to them many times. Bureau of Engineering needs to change their mind. Thank you.
Richard Robinson, is Richard here? Followed by Mr. Evans and Mr. Walsh. Pardon me, and aside here, Tom, I keep tripping on when you were working for Mr. Ferraro. You're dipped it, sir. I just want to say that. Oh, cut it out. Mr. President, members. Former President Kennedy's assassination in Dallas, 1963, reached me. The news was, I was stationed at Kinslo Air Force Base in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. I was playing pinochle. I had the very distinct pleasure of meeting Joe Kennedy. The second, Mr. Kennedy introduced himself to me. I want to say simply that Mr. Obama has placed his healthcare reform on the back burner until after, well, obviously, the second midterm election. Mr. Robinson, speak to city issues. Okay, now, what I'm trying to say is simply this. We're having trouble. Yeah, we're having trouble. But Mr. Kennedy, when he was president, he said it brilliantly. He said, "Some people see things as they are and ask why. I see things as they can be and say why not." He also said, "When the tide comes in, all the ships rise." So we're having trouble. But these are temporary. These are temporary problems. St. Matthew 6:34 says, "Don't worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will worry about the things of itself. Sufficiency unto this day is the evil thereof." Thank you. Mr. Evans, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Labonge, I want to thank you for your outstanding public service over the years, scandal-free service, outstanding leadership, outstanding management. Let me share with you, our city is in a crisis. We have a number of people in our city who need employment opportunity, who need an opportunity to advance their own productive dream. I am firmly convinced, and I've sent a letter to the governor, that we need to make trade, tech, and our community colleges free right now. We need to get these young people the appropriate training they need, appropriate training they deserve, and there's simply no better trade college in Southern California than trade tech. As someone who's deeply concerned about the future of our young people, I want to encourage the governor to take his surplus, a surplus that came from the people, and put it back in higher education. Now, we may not be able to do UC and CSU all at once, but we certainly should start with the fundamental community college. We need to have some degree programs available free online from CSU and UC. Maybe not 20 or 30 programs, but one, two, or three. Again, our city's future depends on a well-educated populace. We have far too many young black and Hispanic teenagers, young adults, who don't have job training, who need job training, who need something to do, need some way to get back on a productive basis versus being recycled through the county jail time after time. Please visit MervEvans.com. And Paul Corret, stop acting like you don't know me. Gil Sidelo, please don't act like you don't know me. All these people I know have forgotten me. Please, Merv Evans.
John Walsh, please. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Something horrible happened to me yesterday. I was sexually harassed by the mayor! Oh, no, 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 not the Mayor Garcetti. I was sexually harassed in Hollywood at a movie theater by Mayor Philner. He was up here. I looked down, and there was a hand on my knee. I said, "What's that hand doing?" He said, "Pardon me, I thought you were a woman." I'm telling you, it's out of control, and I have done the research, ladies and gentlemen, and I think we should all be proud in this building. Because I went as far back as Mayor Sam, and not a single mayor of this city has ever had a complaint lodged against him for sexual harassment. Meanwhile, in San Diego, every hour on the hour, there is a new sexual harassment complaint. You're doing a good job here. If we could only get Weezer to retire right now, then we'd have 100% rate of non-sexual harassment. Ladies, you can come down here, you're safe here. Just stay away from San Diego. $3 billion in street repair? I'm telling you now, forget about it. Do not vote for that. And come to our website, and you will see the Anybody But Autumn Burke Committee, that's Yvonne Breathwaite Burke's daughter. Now, the Obamas are putting all their money into Autumn Burke's campaign to take over the seat held by Steve Bradford. Come to our website, you'll find things on this website you will see nowhere else. That's why 100,000 successful server requests an hour. And I'm telling you, I'm not gonna, I'm right now going to San Diego to file a sexual harassment against Philner. HollywoodHighlands.org. All right, Mr. Clerk, let's hold those other cards. We just got them corrected. Let's go to 33. 33, please.
Item 33, called Special for Cards.
Please have the man sit. 33. Arnold Sacks, John Walsh, Mr. You're out of time. Very good. Thanks for helping me, John. Mr. David Zuma Dogg and Juan Icaula for 33. David, David, you're out of time. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Juan, your turn, Juan. 33.
I told you, you just, I told you just had me sit down, Mr.
I corrected myself. Thank you. Please continue.
Oh, you need to correct yourself a lot more. Evidently, you drink a little too much.
He's off topic, sir.
All right, Juan, thank you very much. It's, no other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 34. It's an item scheduled for closed session.
We're gonna hold on that right in a moment right now. Mr. Kocorin, please.
Yeah, I remember 34 has been heard by Budget and Finance. We recommend approval of the recommendations. It doesn't need to be heard in closed session unless members have questions.
Okay. Any questions, member on 34? It was heard in committee. Note the cards, Mr. Clerk. Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, if I may, in the case entitled William Hertz et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $160,000 in settlement.
Okay, thank you very much. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Note that. Next item. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that leaves item 35 and the remainder of general public comment.
Does Mr. Sacks have any more time?
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. This item refers to the reciprocity suspension between the city and the DWP. A, keep in mind, there is no salary reciprocity. This deals with the 1,500 people that were transferred from the city's Coalition of Labor to, actually, the Department of Power, oh, excuse me, the Department of Water, not the Department of Power, because the Department of Water makes a transfer to the city's general fund, but the Department of Power does not make a transfer to the city's general fund, so they wouldn't be affected by the reciprocity agreement. It's very important to understand that because the transfer is in lieu of property taxes that these agencies should pay. And since the Department of Water is not, Department of Power is not making this transfer, they're also not paying any property tax on any property they may own. Thank you.
David Zuma Dogg.
Okay, first of all, I'm instructing Councilman Tom Labonge, just only read the name that I have on the card. Don't say Dave, okay? That's gonna get you hot water.
All right, thank you. You're out of time. Thanks for the correction. You're out of time. Thank you. No, it's not. It's item 35. Item 35, sir. You're out of time. Thank you very much. Sergeants, when they're out of time, please help me on that. Thank you. Item 35. All right, 35, Mr. Kocorin. We're gonna go to...
Mr. President, we should hold that on the desk.
Lay it on the desk. General public comment. Henry Marin, Henry.
Well, as I told you last week, Mr. Santana told the people at Loyola Marymont that the members of this council are suffering, are, no, asleep at the wheel, so I've been trying to wake y'all up. Today, Mr. Kocorin told you about the Department of Labor's requirement to provide prevailing wage laws for construction work when it's federally funded. So it's a simple equation. Money taken home minus prevailing wage sum due equals cost of benefits. And any way you switch it around, it's always the same equation. Sum minus pay equals amount required for benefits. The lower the pay, the bigger the benefits. The higher the benefits, the lower the pay. I mean, it ain't, it ain't no rocket science here. Now, how come they couldn't tell you that in the first place? And we know how much money you shelter from the pay of others, and media's shown in black and white and hackling, call them MOUs. And you ain't accounted for yet. A people that lack the consciousness to count for the time and money of others cannot be trusted. So why you want to get some old bond money that we can't trust with the old bond money and old CRA funds? Your credibility is being exhausted rapidly. You're across the point of diminishing returns. It's time to wake up and look at Mr. Bonin. I can't get nobody to look at me in eyes. If anybody can't look me in eyes, gotta be a liar. I see a specialist, see you, yo. Mr. Bonin, Ms. Bloomingfield, Mr. Farrell's looking at me. I don't know about the Price is Right. Come on, Curran. Show these people the current price of an hour government service in the city of L.A. and the past price of an hour government service.
Thank you very much. Ms. Desire, followed by Ms. Lofton. Ms. Desire first.
Thank you. I'm representing the millions of felons that will be released in December. Because of the overcrowding, you take our fathers, our sons, our nephews, our cousins, and you lock them up for misdemeanors, and because you have no more space, you throw them out after without proper rehabilitation. They're locked in cages 24 hours a day, and now there's no space. They're coming back to our neighborhoods, not your neighborhoods. And yet, I have a resolution to rehabilitate many of these felons through performing arts. And I gave me copies, almost $200 worth of copies, I gave to each one of you last week, and nobody, not one person responded to me. I live in a district where I'm ashamed of, District 14 and District 1, where Melina and Weezer do not hire not one African American to represent the 41% of African Americans that's in that town, not one. And the Hispanics that are hired dye their hair blonde and look as Caucasian as possible. Yet our neighborhoods are being dyed and killed. I have a list of 123 youths that died in I have a list of 123 youths that died in the last two months alone, just through gunfire. And not one closed session for how to rehabilitate these youths. We have a six-hour closed session for tennis parks and golf parks, and you got more dog parks and poodles that are taken care of than a human life. Weston today is actually listening rather than having a conversation over what I have to say. We are at war, and it's not in your neighborhoods, it's us that are suffering. And for us not to even have a voice to someone to represent us in District 14 or District 1 is a shame. I asked you to please allow me to have employment as advisor between the people and you, so these people who need to have a voice, who cannot speak, I am here because of that. And I need someone to actually listen. I don't wanna speak to Eric Martelli from Weezer office and give him information for him to not to follow up. I'm giving up tons of paper that I don't have money on. I'm on unemployment for this. I need someone to actually do something, to do something!
All right, that completes your comment. Thank you very much. Esther Lofton.
Good afternoon, Mr. LaBonge.
Good afternoon.
My name is Esther Lofton, and I live at 1327 South Van Ness Avenue, the 10th district in the city of Los Angeles. On Friday, August 16th, my son testified, my son Michael L. Lofton testified at the DWP hearing that he was terminated from the DWP. He was a senior electrical mechanic, minus all retirement benefits. There were several officers from the DWP at that hearing, but there was not one rebuttal to this testimony. I'd like to tell you, gentlemen, if you have forgotten, that the 13th Amendment states that slavery ended. Slavery is involuntary servitude, except for crime, or commission of a crime, and abandoned in 1865. Now, my son did tell me that there was an allegation made against me by Mr. Weston at that meeting. I was arrested on October 7th, 2011, by Mr. John Harmon at the district office when I appeared there after the DWP had disconnected our electricity after we had not paid the bill. Now, I don't know whether you, maybe you're too rich and don't appreciate the fact that people who don't get their money or their benefits cannot pay bills, or they select the ones that they're gonna bill, they're gonna pay. And the Department of Water and Power is not high on that list since they are holding his retirement fees. Both my son and I have written to Mr. Weston about this problem. Yes?
And that completes your time. I'm gonna call Mr. Lofton right now. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lofton? Is Mr. Lofton here? Okay. No, no, you can't, Esther. Sorry. That completes your comments on that. Juan Icaula?
Yeah, you have the right to rattle on and on and on about something you're not going to do. Fix the streets and fix the sidewalks. This lady wants to tell you something real, and you don't wanna hear it. You give her two minutes, and that's it. And you put the clock on us, second by second. We're telling you, you're a bunch of stupid fools, 'cause we are able to do it now. August 7th, a ruling was said that you can be a little bit irritant to those idiots ruling over you. And you are a bunch of idiots, 'cause you obviously do not see that the people do not want parking meters, we want better services, we do not want the raise in property values so nobody can afford a place to live. You're doing everything backwards. But we're able to tell you now, even with a little bit of an FU here and there, you know? FU? What university is that? FU? Ford Worth University? FU? Anyway, I'm telling you, everybody needs a place to live. Don't be a bunch of stupid idiots that keep putting barriers on everybody. And what? You go around giving yourself big salaries, riding in limousines. You will always have power in your house because you're not poor enough to not afford it. What a bunch of idiots ruling over other idiots that are even worse, 'cause they don't come and, and tell you in person that we need a better way to do business. Goodbye, idiots.
Mr. Dogg, last speaker, public comment.
Yes, good afternoon, people of Los Angeles and L.A. City Council. My name's Zuma Dogg, and you can read this at LACityNews.com. And this is a triumphant day for the people of Los Angeles. People at home, on August 7th, federal judge Dean Pragerson delivered a victory to the people of Los Angeles. A victory for all people. Public comment has been fundamentally changed forever here inside council chambers. Now, you heard Juan calling them a bunch of idiots. You heard me drop the F-bomb earlier regarding some issues. Yes, the federal judge said that the city council broke U.S. and California law in their censorship and silencing of the public, otherwise known as Zuma Dogg sues the shit out of city council, and the federal court said yes, Zuma Dogg did not cause a disruption. Some of the things that we're allowed to do now. And you know what? Of course, you can come in and say, "Hey, fuck you, fuck this, fuck that," but it's not about being able to use that word. Calm down, Tom. Here's the real implications. When a guy like Tom LaBonge pops up like a pop tart and starts saying, "Hey, don't let them say that. Hey, cut them off." The federal judge said that Speaker has legitimately occupied space, so I can say, "Sit down, LaBonge." Now, when I'm talking about, "What are you, criminals under indictment, and the city's about to funnel money into your show bullshit?" That is relevant. The judge says I'm allowed to say, "Hey, we need to look into this council." Man, I can name them specifically. Now, I have been ejected for saying, "Hey, I want everybody to know that Herb Weston this," and he go, "Oh, don't talk to the council member directly." Well, I started off by saying I want everybody to know, but secondly, yeah, we're allowed to talk to you stupid assholes directly, and you will adore it! And people of Los Angeles are now free! It comes down to real public comment! Zuma Dogg prevail!
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. That completes the public comment. For those who are offended by colorful language, I apologize. Sergeants, clear the room for executive session. Our agenda items are completed. We thank the public.
Note for the record of the shouting, the shouting that Mr. David Salzberg was doing as he's walking out the door disrupting the ordinary operation of this meeting. Could we please make note of that?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna go into closed session. Mr. City Attorney, take my microphone.
Going into closed session to discuss case number, I'm sorry. Case number BC449834, Romero versus City of Los Angeles, and also pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to confer with labor negotiator, the city administrative officer regarding bargaining instructions in relation to labor negotiations with IBEW. Thank you.
All right, members only. Staff could stay here.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play...
...and a safe haven like Hollenback Town.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and when we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity, accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Hey, Mr. President, read the back of his T-shirt. Russ, could you check that TV screen to make sure it's proper? Okay, members, we're back in session right now. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Mr. Englander.
I just wanted to remind everybody to grab their wall maps that we provided. They're behind the clerk's desk over here of your streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buzkayino, for that presentation. Mr. Buzkayino.
And a reminder to colleagues, as you heard from Council President Wesson, sock drive continues. We have seven days left. So please be sure to tell your constituents, district offices and staff, and advise them, and use your social media to promote the sock drive here in the city.
Thank you very much.
Leading with a number of socks that have run in.
CD-14 proudly leads to date.
Very good. No other announcements, any adjourned motions? Mr. Weezer, please all rise. All rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Arthur "Dietrich" Harris III, also known as Artwork Jamal. Mr. Jamal was a downtown resident and musician who played his trademark blues at venues including Seven Grand for the past seven years. Artwork Jamal passed away in August 6th from complications related to diabetes and congestive heart disease. He will be dearly missed in the downtown community. Adopted as a baby and raised by his mother and grandmother, Artwork and his brother Niall sang and played a variety of instruments. As a teenager, he played trumpet in the Los Angeles Junior Philharmonic. He later picked up guitar and was inspired by rock and funk bands. Artwork was accepted into the prestigious Berklee School of Music in Boston, but a diagnosis of paranoid schizophrenia sidelined his music ambitions for many years. As a young man, he was a recording engineer in albums by rap artists such as Ice Cube, Tupac Shakur, and Coolio, and R&B singer Montell Jordan. He ran his own studio in Glendale, Graphic Sound Arts, from 1995 until the year 2000. And he was a devotee of Muddy Waters and played a similar brand of electric blues. In recent years, he earned a reputation for transfixing audiences with Old Delta and Chicago Blue standards at downtown bars and night spots. He had a monthly gig at Whiskey Bar Seven Grand on 7th Street in downtown, which will host a memorial event for him today, this evening, for all those who would like to attend. Mr. Jamal is survived by his wife, lead apparent, and the countless downtown residents and community members that count him as a dear friend, and everyone will miss him. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Kucuria.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to rise today to ask that we adjourn in memory of Stephen J. Porres Lang, an artist and longtime community activist in Valley Glen who passed away last week way too early at the age of 60. Steve was a friend of mine, he was a community leader, he was a Renaissance man in many ways. He was born in Skokie, Illinois, and graduated from the Harrington Institute of Interior Design in Chicago. And like so many other people throughout the country, made his way west here to Los Angeles to be able to pursue his creative vision and dream. As a graphic designer, Steve was widely celebrated for his artistry and his vision, but he was also an actor, a producer, and an artist. He designed websites, he authored, and drew, and published a children's book even, which was one of his proudest accomplishments. But in addition to all of his artistic and creative endeavors, Steve was one of the great community and neighborhood leaders of Valley Glen. And he was not only a trusted neighbor, friend, and dedicated member of the community, he served as a block captain in his neighborhood watch group and took a great interest in local issues. He was a warrior when it came to inappropriate development in the area and was one of the champions who fought against a particularly horrendous apartment building that was developed in his neighborhood. He'll be remembered by all of us who knew him, by his family, his many friends, for his community engagement, his humor, his kindness, his generosity of spirit, his compassion, and his storytelling, and we'll miss him. Steve is survived by his loving husband Phil. And Phil and Steve, by the way, were very proud to be one of the first legally married same-sex couples in California. His father Marcus and his two dogs, Oreo and Jaco, as well as a whole community of friends and neighbors who cared very much about Steve and who continue to care and be there for Phil as well. I'll miss Steve very much, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you very much. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Elaine Lopez. For 43 years, she's married to Dave Lopez, the great reporter for Channel 2 and 9. Elaine was born in Huntington Park in 1948, where she was raised at Southgate, and graduated with a master's degree from the University of California at Santa Barbara. After college, she went to work for the Long Beach Unified School District. And at four years of a courtship, she and Dave married in 1970. For over 43 years, their marriage, they're survived by their son Matt and daughter Tammy, as well as seven grandchildren as well. Dave Lopez's wife Elaine was a true inspiration to him. She had a long illness recently, had a press incident out there. He had to leave the incident to go care for her. He truly loved her greatly, and she will be sorely missed by the Lopez family and all. Ask we adjourn in memory of Elaine Lopez. All members. So, members, this completes the agenda for today and our adjourned motions. Go ahead and serve the city well, and every day's a blessing.